Good morning, everyone. Welcome to today's New York City Council hearing from Committee on Public Safety. Use this time to silence all cell phone and electronic devices. If you wish to submit testimony, you may send it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Once again, that's testimony@council@nyc.gov. Chair, we may begin.
Good morning. I am Councilmember Camila Hanks, Chair in the Committee of Public Safety, and I am joined by my committee member, Councilmember Botcher. Before we begin today's hearing, I want to take this opportunity to pay my respects to the family of FDNY EMS Lieutenant Allison Russo-Elling, who was fatally stabbed in Queens yesterday. Allison Russo exemplified the best of all New Yorkers, having dedicated her life to the service of others. She was an inspiration to our city, and I want to offer my deepest condolences to her family and the entire FDNY community for their loss. Today, the committee will be examining a topic that I am very familiar with and which is very important to me and should be to all New Yorkers: community and problem-solving courts. Problem-solving courts provide a non-putitive alternative to conventional criminal court adjudication, offering criminal defendants with services that aim to address the underlying causes of criminal behavior. Important services such as job skills training, placement, drug and mental health treatment, housing assistance, and community mediation. Community courts are often located in underserved neighborhoods, geographically distant from centralized courthouse, and provide a combination of conventional criminal adjudication with alternative programming using a problem-solving model to provide neighborhood-focused approach to addressing localized issues to breaking cycles of criminal conduct. Under the supervision of a judge and clinical staff, these courts provide individualized treatment plans in court monitoring to help address specific needs of participating defendants in an effort to reduce recidivism and promote positive social outcomes. Through collaborative effort of the New York State Unified Court System and the Center for Court Innovation and other partners, New York is the home to an array of problem-solving courts, including mental health courts, domestic violence courts, drug treatment courts, and youth courts. Community courts such as the Midtown Community Court and Red Hook Community Justice Center. I have visited many of these courts and have been impressed by what I have seen: a welcoming courtroom, supportive judges and staff, that forced and accessible, inviting, and easy-to-navigate environment. I am encouraged by this approach to providing holistic services to criminal defendants in aims of reducing recidivism and improving the quality of life for our communities while holding people accountable for their actions. I am eager to examine the success and limitation of this alternative approach to criminal adjudication, evaluate concerns and criticisms regarding the effectiveness and problem-solving courts, and explore needed changes to improve court functioning and case outcomes. I hope we can assess the potential for expansion of these courts through growing capacity at existing locations or opening new facilities to underserved communities citywide. And finally, I believe we must continue our oversight in the various components of the criminal justice system with the commitment to evaluating what policies and approaches are effective at helping individuals break cycles of criminal conduct. With that, I look forward to hearing the administration and the public testimony. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. We'll begin with testimony from the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice. We'll hear from Nora Daniel, who's the Chief of Staff. Nora, will you please raise your right hand and affirm the following: you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee, and to answer honestly to Councilmember questions.
I do.
You may go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Hanks and members of the Committee on Public Safety. My name is Nora Daniel, and I'm the Chief of Staff for the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice. Thank you for the opportunity to testify about some of the public safety interventions that helped to make our city safer. Our city's public safety continuum is broad and includes a number of programs and interventions that are specifically designed to promote public safety by providing the particular programs and services that help to keep people from entering or returning to jail or prison. The programs include alternatives to incarceration, reentry services, and transitional housing, as well as community courts. The Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice advises Mayor Adams on criminal justice and public safety policy, is the mayor's representative to the courts, district attorneys, defenders, state criminal justice agencies, and other system actors. Maché moves our city forward by implementing Mayor Adams' vision for a safer city for all New Yorkers. Maché's programs and services reinforce, enhance, public safety while maintaining fairness in order to provide judges with meaningful options for accountability. Alternatives to incarceration, also known as ATIs, promote public safety without requiring an individual to spend time in custody. ATI programs are funded by Maché, which allow nonprofit organizations to deliver much-needed services and support to participants while deterring them from serving a jail or prison sentence. These programs also lower the jail population and allow people to remain in their communities while increasing stability and well-being. Currently, Maché has $32 million in contracts in FY23 with 14 nonprofit organizations that run 24 ATI programs throughout New York City. ATI programs have the capacity to serve approximately 5,500 cases, as well as to provide additional behavioral health services to ATI participants and housing resources for women enrolled in ATI programs. Recently, the city has strengthened ATI programs even further to provide additional supportive services to address participants' needs more fully. To date, these ATI programs provide a multitude of wraparound services, such as counseling, job readiness training, mental health services, basic needs, housing assistance, and more. In addition to ATIs, we also have reentry services. We've strengthened our reentry programming to improve transition and release planning and services. The city has invested $20 million into this program, which builds upon the success of the Jails-to-Jobs Reentry Services Program that was launched in 2018. During incarceration in jail or prison, individuals work with transition coordinators to create discharge plans for when they are released, and also work with reentry mentors who help facilitate their reentry process on an individualized basis. The reentry mentors develop relationships with released individuals to encourage participation in relevant services and programs. The supports provided by this team of service providers include assistance locating temporary or permanent stable housing, mental health care, substance use treatment, counseling, paid transitional employment, job training, career certifications, and education assistance, among other services depending on the specific needs of each returning individual. Maché is also contracting with Unite Us, a web-based referral management platform and service directory that streamlines service referrals among providers to ensure that individuals are quickly connected with the right services to meet their needs. We anticipate that the case planning and coordination, combined with expanded services and stronger service offerings and stronger relationships, will help ease the path to a stable life outside of DOC and DOC's custody and hopefully reduce the likelihood of return. Additionally, in order to maximize safety during the public health emergency, Maché worked with agency and nonprofit partners to stand up an entirely new set of services in under-enrolled hotels in New York City. Beginning in late March 2020, Maché worked with the New York City Office of Emergency Management and nonprofit partners to provide emergency reentry housing to clients leaving jail and prison. These hotels have been vital to maintaining safety as we transitioned out of the pandemic, and we are incredibly proud of the work done by Maché's staff and our providers to ensure that those leaving custody had a safe, secure place to go. The emergency hotels program has provided a much-needed bridge to the full implementation of Maché's transitional housing program. Transitional housing provides housing resources to individuals impacted by the criminal justice system. Maché is currently implementing and expanding its transitional housing program to 1,000 beds by the end of FY23. These programs provide participants a safe, supportive environment to live as they participate in services to reduce their likelihood of rearrest and/or reincarceration and stabilize their reintegration into their communities. The transitional housing program will be administered by five providers, who will offer necessary supports and services to a wide range of individuals with different needs. The services available to transitional housing clients include public benefits enrollment, education, family services, individual group counseling, Metro cards, assistance with identifying appropriate permitting housing opportunities, and childcare services. In addition to these, we also have, and we also work with, the community courts. The Center for Court Innovation operates community courts and community justice centers with city funding. Maché works in coordination with the Center for Innovation, the Center for Court Innovation and the Office of Court Administration, and community courts in efforts to provide quality services to individuals who are impacted by the criminal justice system as a way to reduce recidivism and the likeliness of future involvement in the criminal justice system. Maché funds the following through a contract with OSA, the Midtown Community Court, Red Hook Community Justice Center, Brownsville Community Justice Center, Bronx Youth Court, and Queens Community Justice Center at the Rockaways, which provides services including ATIs, individual group counseling, mentoring, education and employment support, and mental health and substance use treatment to individuals who encounter the criminal justice center. While Maché's role is primarily as a coordinating partner, we deeply value CCI's work and believe that the programs provide a vital community-based avenue for the justice involved. Thank you for allowing me to discuss alternatives to incarceration, reentry services, and transitional housing, as well as community courts. I'm happy to answer any questions the committee has.
Thank you so much. I appreciate this, Daniel. So I have a few questions based on your testimony. What is the city's total investment in problem-solving and community courts, and how has that amount changed in recent fiscal years?
So the current investment is about $4 million across the community court span for the ones that we're talking about right now. And I am not sure the full history of that investment, but that's what the current investment is for FY23.
Are there any specific geographic areas or target populations you believe that Maché should be in and be better served by non-traditional court adjudication? So where else could you think that you could be?
So that kind of, like, the kind of analysis that we would do for that would be pretty detailed, and I think that it would involve looking at which communities, you know, have a harder time coming into the more centralized court system and where we're seeing the most need for that, based on what's happening in the court system and what we're seeing. Currently, I don't have any specific locations identified, but it's definitely something we can continue to look at and to discuss.
Yeah, I think that that's something that we would like to look into more, and identify spaces where we need community courts.
Right.
That's a loaded question, because I'm from Staten Island. So describe, you know, Maché's involvement with the establishment, you know, funding the operations of problem-solving and community courts. Kind of just talk about that, you know?
Sure. So the community court started as an initiative of this body, and we have taken over, Maché has taken over the contract, and we work with the, through OCA and through CCI, the provider. There's a contract through both those entities to implement the courts, and we primarily serve as, you know, as that contracting body and with a certain amount of program management as well, mostly related to, you know, managing the contract.
Thank you. How would Maché evaluate program success with contracted partners? And how would you?
Largely through the services rendered and participants, like, is the space real used, that kind of thing? Is the contract going the way that it's supposed to?
So what would be some of the outcomes that Maché would be measuring to find out if these programs are effective?
So I don't think we look at the community courts as like a singular entity unto themselves. I think we primarily look at the kinds of interventions that we fund and that we track, like ATIs, like reentry services, that kind of thing. The broader aspect of the community courts is definitely something that we should, that we are interested in taking a look at, and we'd be happy to discuss further how we might want to evaluate the use of the courts.
So to build on that, to what extent does Maché monitor case outcomes and empirically study effectiveness, such as programming? Like, how do we know when we're winning?
For our ATI programs, we look at rearrest or recidivism, and there's a pretty low rearrest rate for folks who are in ATIs, and I can get you those numbers. So that's the kind of thing that we would look at.
Thank you. And finally, before I pass it on to my colleagues, how does the administration plan on improving early interventions, including in the school system, to ensure that at-risk youth receive the necessary services before becoming involved in the criminal justice system?
So we have a few programs. One, I think that the administration has made a significant, or the administration has made an enormous investment in jobs for youth, and I think that continuing that investment, as well as looking into other ways to ensure that students don't continue or don't go down the wrong path and aren't interrupted before they get to that point, are vitally important. So we have programs also like school mediation services that we have through our crisis management system, as well as youth interventions and through the MAP program as well.
Thank you. Finally, do you think that anything else needs to be done to strengthen the preventative side in how we interface with community courts and the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice?
I think there's always room for improvement, and that's something that we are consistently looking at, to try to see places where we can improve.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you so much. So I would like to recognize my colleagues, Councilmember Holden, Councilmember Ariola, and Councilmember De La Rosa, and Councilmember Rita Joseph is joining us online. And with that, if any of my colleagues have any questions that they would like to ask of Ms. Daniel.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Council District III, the district I represent, is home to Midtown Community Court. Are you very familiar with this court?
I am somewhat familiar with this court. I would not say very, but somewhat, yes.
Great. So the Midtown Community Court recently opened a misdemeanor behavioral health court. The Midtown Community Court's been open for many years, but they recently launched this behavioral health court, but it's only open one day a week. And recently, my colleague, Senator Brad Hoileman, and I, and other colleagues, wrote the State Office of Court Administration, asking why that misdemeanor health court was only open one day a week, given everything that's going on in the city. And the answer we got back was that they don't have the caseloads to warrant it being open more than one day a week. They said that few defendants have opted to take advantage of this behavioral health court. And to quote the State Office of Court Administration in their reply to us, they said that in an effort to increase volume, we opened this misdemeanor health court. Few defendants had offered to take advantage of this opportunity. Most defendants who fall into, most individuals who fall into either of these categories receive very advantageous plea offers, including adjournments in contemplation of dismissal at 100 Center Street, and to prefer to have their cases heard there. So people suffering from serious mental illness, who are being accused of misdemeanor crimes, are having their cases dismissed down at 100 Center Street. They're not going to the misdemeanor health court, which is designed to help get them treatment. What is the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice doing to address this? Do you think that's an issue? Are people with misdemeanor charges with serious mental illness, are they getting help at 100 Center Street or not?
So it's my understanding that there are services available throughout the court system for people who have serious mental illnesses. Whether or not, like, the specific data on who's obtaining mental health services at 100 Center, I don't have currently, but I can look into it.
Have you had any conversations with Midtown Community Court about the fact that few people are apparently taking advantage of their mental health court?
I'm not familiar with conversations that have been had, but there could have been some conversations had about that. I know we are aware that the caseloads, that OCA did not feel that the caseloads were high enough to warrant it, but I definitely think it's something that we could continue looking into.
What services does someone with serious mental illness get when they get charged with a misdemeanor crime and their case is processed at 100 Center Street? What kind of services are they getting? So we're talking about someone with serious mental illness.
So it depends on how their case moves through and what is happening with that case. And also, you know, we work with defense attorneys as well, and so they're often the, you know, the voice of the client. They are the voice of their client. And so that kind of depends on how that works through. But I think that it's definitely something that we can talk through in detail, though.
Could you give me an example of a case that's a success story? Person with serious mental illness gets charged with, let's say, shoplifting. They're someone who is in need of mental health treatment. They go to 100 Center Street. What specifically is happening? Could you give an example of an instance where a person got help?
So we have many instances of where people have gotten help, because there's help available through the ATI programs, through, like, if they are on supervised release or if they are put into another program, or if they are put into another program through their defense attorney. But a specific individual, I would not know, but I am happy to look into that and to get back to you on it.
What are some of the nonprofits that are part of the ATI programs, the Alternatives to Incarceration, down at 100 Center Street?
Our ATI providers include Fortune Society, CCI, Cases, there's 14 of them, so those are a few.
Those are all great nonprofits. I would love to talk to you more about making better use of the mental health court at Midtown Community Court. Midtown Community Court, as a program, is opened five days a week, but the court is only hearing cases one day a week. And the fact that we have a specialized mental health court in 2022 in the midst of this crisis that's not getting the volume of people to help that it is, I would, I think that's something that the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice should focus on.
Okay, we can definitely discuss it some more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember De La Rosa.
Thank you so much for being here today. My question kind of piggybacks on Councilmember Botcher's question, which is, is there any intersectional services? So if a young person, a youth, that would normally go through a youth court is exhibiting a mental health crisis, is there any cross work that is done or management in order to provide the services or make sure that the person is in the right type of program?
So yes, the programs have services for people as young as 13, the ATI programs do. And there is a lot of cross work that's done across different organizations to make sure that young people have the right services. There's also often ACS involvement, and I know that our providers do work closely with ACS and with the, they often have different lines of service that folks can access.
So if a young person is put through youth court, and it is determined that the person has a severe mental illness, does that person then get transferred to the mental health court or the drug treatment court, depending on the need? Or just simply by the fact that the person is under 18, they go through the youth court?
I think it very much depends on the case, and I would have to get a little bit more information about what we're seeing and in order to, you know, provide you a little bit of a more detailed answer.
And does the Mayor's Office for Criminal Justice track sort of the types of cases that are coming in and where they're coming in from? Is that information that you all have?
That is information that we have through, yes, that is some information that we have.
Okay. And then my last-
It's primarily tracked through the Office of Court Administration, but we are able to work with them to provide different information.
And then my last question is language access. I always ask about this. What is the situation if the person does not speak English?
I believe that there are, that there is language access at the court, but I will get more information on that for you.
Okay. I look forward to hearing from you. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Councilmember Ariola.
Hi, thank you for coming. So I agree with both my colleagues in the questions that they've asked, and they're very serious questions, because we have services that are there, yet they're being underutilized. So at the point where the person is, where the determination on their case is resolved, is going to these programs part and parcel of that adjudication, or is it just left to them, you know, on their own to go, and there is no type of oversight from there?
So if the services are part of their adjudication, then yes, they are. They are, people are working with them to make sure that they are required to go, if that's part of their adjudication.
And there's oversight for that to make sure that they're going?
There is oversight for that to make sure that they are going.
Is there consequence if they don't go?
There can be consequences if they don't go, yes.
And Councilmember De La Rosa brings up a good point, because there are other courts that have people who were arrested come before them that have mental illness, and if there is no intersectional kind of program, then a lot of people are falling through the cracks, and that's why we're having such an issue with, you know, mental health and people with mental health issues on our streets. So there is a program in Rockaway, and I represent a portion of the Rockaway. Our majority whip, Silvina Brooks-Powers, represents the other end, the Queens Center, it's in Rockaway. So that particular center, do you know how many cases they see?
So that particular center is not, is doing services at this time, because they're ramping up to their full implementation. When they are fully implemented, they expect to have about 1,000 participants come through the center.
So they're not operational?
They are operational, but there aren't very many. There's maybe 100 right now, I think. There's fewer than 100 participants at this time, but we anticipate that that will grow over the next year or so.
Okay, is that because they're a new program?
It's because they're brand new, yes.
It's because they're a new program? Okay. Okay, all right, thank you.
And I did want to just express the fact that we take this issue of mental health very, very seriously, and we're very much interested in improving what we're, how we're handling people with severe mental illnesses.
Thank you.
Is there any further questions from my colleagues? I would encourage my colleagues to re-ask those questions for the DA and the Center for Court Innovation, where they have, like, the first touch on a lot of these issues. So, and I thank you very much, Ms. Daniel, for your testimony and coming in today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you so much. Next, we'll turn to DA Michael McMahon from Richmond County. DA McMahon will be joining us via Zoom, so we'll just make sure he's unmuted and ready to go.
Can you hear me, Madam Chairwoman?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Good morning, Chair Hanks and members of the Public Safety Committee of the New York City Council. My name is Michael McMahon. I'm privileged and honored to serve the people of Staten Island as their district attorney, and it's an honor and pleasure to speak before the city council on this very important topic this morning. I hope you and your staffers and families are all well during these difficult times, and I look forward to continuing our work to improve public safety. And I thank the chairwoman for giving a special shout-out to the EMT lieutenant who lost her life yesterday, just another point that underscores how important the work of this committee is. We thank you for the opportunity to appear this morning and to submit testimony regarding our borough's problem-solving courts, and we will submit a lengthier testimony with this. We hope that you come to realize that we need to have a community justice center here on Staten Island. And before I go into this critical need, I'd just like to speak about our approaches to the alternatives to incarceration efforts that we now have underway on Staten Island. We call this in the broader heading Staten Island's Problem-Solving Courts. And for us, these include the HOPE program, which is Heroin Overdose Prevention and Education Program, the Overdose Avoidance and Recovery Court, the Drug Treatment Court, Veterans Court, and Mental Health Courts. And in their dedicated missions, these specialized court parts offer individuals meaningful opportunities to avoid a path through conventional prosecution in favor of a more person-centered approach to addressing the root causes of crimes, and they offer engagement with professionals to get at those root causes. So let me just explain these different initiatives and how they work together in our problem-solving court. and how they work together in our problem-solving approaches. So the HOPE Program, as we call it, HOPE 1.0, began in 2017 when we realized in Staten Island that we were in the throes of a raging opioid overdose epidemic, which unfortunately still continues to this day. And indeed, the epidemic from COVID has exacerbated but unfortunately overshadowed this crisis. As we see, the overdose deaths are the highest in New York City and the highest in our country than ever before during the past year. That being said, the way the HOPE Program works is that if someone is arrested for misdemeanor possession charges of not controlled substances, they are met at the precinct by a peer mentor who offers to them this program, explains it to them, and tells them within seven days if you get an assessment. And then for thirty-day assessment and recommendation as for a very individualized treatment program, whatever that individual needs. And if they undertake that for thirty days, then at the end of those thirty days, that case will be dismissed and sealed. In fact, it's never actually arraigned. This is a pre-arrahment approach. I mention that because it's not exactly court-driven, although the courts are our partners and the police department are our partners. But we've learned certain elements of that program are very effective in other programs. And that those include immediate connection to a peer mentor and offer that is tailored exactly for that individual, a program that is meaningful but not arduous and doesn't last an extensive period of time. And then finally, at the end, dismissal and sealing of the cases as if the arrest had never existed. And that has led to over a thousand Staten Islanders getting that offer and following through on it and having their cases dismissed and sealed. It's a program that has been duplicated throughout the other boroughs in the city of New York. And recently, in 2022, the White House and its Office of the National Drug Council Control Policy cited the groundbreaking program as a model for the nation in combating the opioid epidemic. The other component of that is HOPE 2.0. And that is where the court becomes involved because the offer of diversion is made either at arraignment or post-arraignment. And that is for cases where the HOPE 1.0 isn't available because maybe the individual's record, maybe the charges are more severe. But we still want to have that problem-solving approach. And so we make it at that time. And then the period of time that they have to engage is a little bit longer. But at the end, if they do, then again, the case is dismissed and sealed. And between the two programs, we've had close to fifteen hundred individuals in Staten Island who have found a better path. We also have on Staten Island what is called the Overdose Avoidance and Recovery Court or OR Court, which was begun throughout the city by Judge George Crosso and OCA. And this is a more traditional model of drug treatment court where the judges are very much involved. And this is for individuals who have more serious histories, that the charges are more serious. But it's quite clear to everyone that the individuals are one usage away from overdosing and perhaps dying. And I'm sure, as everyone on this panel knows, that with the advent of fentanyl and now xylazine, which is actually an animal tranquilizer, one more usage, because these narcotics are so deadly, could mean an overdose that leads to death. And that's why these courts are all programmed, if you will, or calculated to have an immediate impact to try to get an intervention. We also have in Staten Island the traditional Staten Island Drug Treatment Court. And again, this is one where the court, the defense attorney, the providers are all involved. These involve a guilty plea being taken. And then as part of the sentencing, there is a course of what is prescribed for that individual. And upon completion of that, then the case will either be dismissed or the charge will be reduced. And that's the traditional model. It's not as nimble as the other programs, but in certain instances, still very effective. We also have in Staten Island the Richmond County Veterans Treatment Court, which is again, an alternative to jail and is designed to provide supportive services for individuals identified as veterans. The key to that is that we have the Veterans Administration as our partner. They are an important one with us, as well as we have OCA's resource counselor there as well. And then again, that usually involves a guilty plea being taken. And then the curative or alternative steps, if you will, that follow are taken after the plea but pre-final sentencing. And that's again, a more traditional model. Staten Island also has a mental health treatment court. We began in 2010 under my predecessor for felony cases only. Again, a model similar to the Drug Treatment Court and the Veterans Treatment Court where a plea is taken. We've advocated for years to get one for misdemeanors with earlier intervention. And we were able to begin that this year. So we finally have a mental health treatment court for both felonies and misdemeanors. And we were proud of the fact that we continue to advocate within the courts to expand these programs. We continue to advocate to have the resources in the courtroom. And that's the key to success, that you can have a court operating in, under this model in a holistic approach. But if you don't have the resources immediately present and the follow-up and the ability to provide what these individuals need, whether it's mental health, addiction counseling, vocational training, education, family counseling, then this would fail. And that leads me to the second part of my testimony, which is, and as Chief of Staff from Mockjay said, how important the community justice centers are. We would like a community justice center on Staten Island. We deserve it. And I know the chairwoman is strongly behind this. And I hope that everyone understands that it's unfair for nearly five hundred thousand Staten Islanders not to have the access to this type of resource when it's available to individuals in the same circumstances in the rest of the city of New York. And as this panel has heard, a successful community justice center model provides opportunity and access to vital services, not only in response to the crime, but also as a preventative opportunity to work through conflict, educate our youth in communities, as well as build a sound and sustainable network of support to minimize recidivism and help cultivating lasting positive change. And that's really the key, that the justice center, really justice center is a gateway to services even without an arrest being made. And that's something that the people of Staten Island don't have. Now, I want to just report briefly to the committee that the work that we've been doing to try to get this center here. And it's been a long, long road. COVID obviously set us back a little bit. But we are determined with the chairwoman's partnership and leadership to get this done. And we've really been advocating for a community justice center since I first ran for office in 2015. And then once elected, we joined with former Borough President James Otto, created a task force of Staten Island community leaders, brought them to visit the Community Justice Court in Red Hook, as well as the center in Brownsville. We've had numerous meetings. We talked with CCI and Mockjay, and we've worked on this resolutely throughout. And January 2018, with funding provided by our office, CCI, who would be our partner, and this is, you heard the great work that they do, we took the next crucial step and conducted a feasibility study of the concept of bringing a community justice center to Staten Island. And the results, to put it simply, were positive. And we'd be glad to share that study with anyone here. Over nine months, CCI studied the issue and came back with a positive report. Part of this study was interviewing community leaders. I just want to share with you one of the quotes from a North Shore resident of Staten Island as part of that report. She said, "You don't feel as if you're going to be treated fairly, especially if you're a person of color going through the court system on Staten Island." Stakeholders and community members consistently argue that there is a pressing need to reimagine the justice system on Staten Island. And as one profit leader argued, a community court would be great here on Staten Island. It would address some of the disparities in treatment and disparities in adjudication of cases. It would give people who don't have the resources the ability to have these kinds of alternatives in ways that they don't have now when they go through the traditional criminal court system. I think it's obvious that we all agree that community justice approach works. And it's one that we don't have fully here on Staten Island, and it's one that we deserve. So yeah, so CCI produced a report saying that this could function. And they identified a suitable location for the community justice center here on Staten Island. And that would be the former criminal court in Staten Island, which is located in the Stapleton area of the borough. In 2015, that court closed when our courts consolidated in St. George in the new Supreme Court Criminal Court building. And that building has remained empty. It's a perfect size, more than twenty-five thousand square feet. Will need some renovation, but it could be an amazing space for justice and for the communities of Stapleton, Park Hill, and the rest of the North Shore, which indeed is in the most vital need, are most diverse, but also through the crime waves that we see now in the city, one that is the most challenged because of so many conditions that this court would address. I should also say that we've not sat idly by and said, "Well, if we don't have a location, we're not going to provide the services to Staten Island." And so the community solutions pilot has been a programmatic foundation for a fully-realized Staten Island Community Justice Center. And those community solutions are things that we're working on with CCI, who's really up to their presence on Staten Island, has provided some great services to the islanders and provides some of the services that exist, that would exist through a community justice center. They have a Staten Island Justice Center here now that provides certain services that we talk about, and I won't list them all. The problem is, is that it's scattered. It's not centrally located. It's not directed, connected directly to the court. And it doesn't provide us the full holistic approach that we need. But we've been successful in those efforts, and we will continue to work with CCI to create the community justice center, almost virtually, if you will. But we don't have the physical space. Some of the programs that we would enhance and fully realize if we, and I know this goes to some of the councilmembers' questions, what happens in a community justice court setting? Well, we would be able to establish neighborhood-based mentoring programs, placekeeping and place-making, neighborhood safety initiatives, commercial corridor reinvigoration, which has been really palpable. If you go visit the Brownsville Community Justice Center, violence prevention through youth organizing, restorative justice programs and reentry programs, which Staten Island, we are part of Staten Island Reentry Task Force. But we really don't have significant reentry programs here in our borough. Increased access to justice and having a housing resource center and also having training. One of the sort of bigger areas of concern we have here is vehicular crimes. Staten Island perhaps has more than our brothers and sisters in the other boroughs. I know you have some, but given our nature here of not having much public transportation, we're more on cars. We could have good driver training programs there as well. So what's next? The roadmap to Staten Island, having a, establishing a community justice center relies on you, my friends from the city council, former member. I know the budget power that you have. We need the budget resources. And I know that the chairwoman has given us money this year to continue the process, to continue the studying process. And we have, as I said, we've taken several steps. And what we need to do is to pilot and expand CCI's community solutions program at the Staten Island Justice Center, which exists now, by providing additional funding for CCI's work. So I'm asking for funding for them so they can be more engaging the community in the project's participatory planning process through a need survey. And this is what the chairwoman has funded in this year's budget. And then we need an architectural vision and planning to deal with the building. And that work has been partially funded in '23. And then doing a cost assessment and projection for renovations and secure the necessary capital funding for this project. So in conclusion, we wholeheartedly endorse the benefits of alternatives to incarceration. We wholeheartedly thank this committee for looking into granularly these initiatives and see which ones work and where they are needed in our city, in our borough, in particular Staten Island, if I haven't mentioned that yet. And we look forward to working with you in this regard. And again, the bottom line is this. We can speak to the need to address the mental health crisis in the city of New York. We can speak to the need to address the addiction crisis in the city of New York. We can speak to the need of addressing the crisis where we see an increase in criminal behavior because of those underlying causes and to that poverty, lack of education, breakdown of the family structure. But if we don't put in, build out that safety net around our courts and around our criminal justice system, we'll never get the results that we so, so, so obviously need in our city right now. So I thank you for your service to our city and for your attention to the needs of the borough of Staten Island. Thank you.
Thank you, DA McMahon. You know my commitment to making sure that there is a community court on Staten Island. And we have equity, as we do in all the other boroughs. And the importance of, you know, non-punitive alternatives to conventional criminal justice is exactly what we need in Staten Island. So having said that, I just have a few questions. I mean, you really covered a lot, but... So we understand the importance of having community courts. But in light of the tragic killing of the EMS Lieutenant Allison Russo, how are we ensuring that people who perform violent crimes are not being let back out onto the street and placing our fellow New Yorkers in danger, notwithstanding that the gentleman never had a prior arrest record? But how do the courts distinguish whether someone who's been arrested should be eligible for these community courts? And when are other alternatives used?
Yeah, so listen, earlier, the intervention when someone is in, has mental health illness or is in crisis, the better, right? We all know that. And quite often, the criminal justice system is a pathway into services for someone who is in need. But if we're not doing an assessment right at the inception of the case, so at arrest or arraignment, which in Staten Island, we're not doing because we're not in the court, we're doing the assessments. People have to be referred to another location. Quite often, they can be, I would say, lost, but lost in the shuffle, perhaps an unartful way to say it. We're not doing what we are promising to do. I'll also say that when people, you know, listen, so the individual who truly slayed Lieutenant Allison Russo may not have had a brush with the law, maybe didn't have an arrest record. But if the mental health diversion centers that were promised by the prior administration were really up and running, perhaps he would have been diverted there. I don't know. But certainly, certainly, when people reach that level of crisis, there are usually indicators along the way. Quite often, they are in contact with the criminal justice system. So maybe in that case, we wouldn't have succeeded sadly. And again, my heart was out to her family and her colleagues who risked their lives for us every day. But we can certainly have a more positive impact if we have more immediate assessment, if we have a place for them to go for treatment, and if necessary, for diversion. And we have not fully realized the usage of the centers. There are some in the other boroughs, not here in Staten Island, yet mental health diversion centers. They need to be better implemented and utilized. And a way to do that is through the criminal justice system. Going back to the principles that I spoke to before that we learned from our HOPE program, intervention from a peer mentor immediately. That has to happen at the precinct. You know, we do health screenings of individuals at the precinct when they're arrested. Why aren't we doing mental health screenings right then and there? And then we would know, but we're not. And then we see what happens.
Thank you so much. Before I continue with my questioning, I would like to recognize my colleague, Councilmember Caban, has joined us. So how would a prosecutor evaluate a defendant eligibility for participating in programming offered through a problem-solving and community court?
So there are a myriad of pathways into the ATI court system. So there are, there are a myriad of pathways into the ATI court system. Uh, certainly, sometimes we we create the program charge specific. That was uh how I described the Hope one point O program. Now we've expanded that uh more. There is um, um, I have on my team, I have the individuals in the ATI program that screen every arrest and those individuals include a prosecutor, but also social workers and and people who are specialists in um treatment and they're always looking to see if there are cases that are eligible. Uh, we look at an individual's history uh as we know it. Uh, we also receive uh requests from the defense bar uh and sometimes from the court. And then the um the courts also have a resource uh person uh who also does some evaluation. So there are a few different ways. It's not a perfect system. It would be better if an assessment, again, was done at arrests, as I said. Um, and if we, you know, in every precinct now, we have someone doing health screening. We have a victim advocate uh through Safe Horizons. Why don't we have somebody doing a mental health screening as well? That would, to me, would be then even though immediately that this is an individual that um if if we can, we'll find a way to steer them to the alternative incarceration.
Thank you. So what would you say we need in order to be prepared in order to make uh these assessments right then and there? Is there, is there budgetary implications? Is it staffing implications?
I would look at the program that puts uh a, uh, there's the nurse doing screenings in most precincts. They're uh or at least in most uh APOs where, you know, where arraignment's are done. I don't know, I'm sorry, where bookings are done before they go for arraignment to the courthouse. Um, so uh I would have somebody there. So you don't need in every precinct. In Staten Island, we have one precinct uh where the individuals are brought for their booking. It's called the APO and then they go up for arraignment. In the other boroughs, I I maybe I'm not sure how it's structured, but I would look at that. And so at least at there's a point where someone gets a mental health screening early on. And if there it there's an issue, there's mental health uh illness uh or crisis, then someone should be able to get some sort of uh treatment along the way. And if we're not, could we do that for health? Uh, we certainly do that for our victims uh uh in in the precinct by victim advocates in my office as well. Do an incredible job, so we're doing that, but we're not dealing with mental health. And and listen, whether it's a brutal beating in a in the subway, whether it's a stabbing of this uh of of the lieutenant, uh, we know that a lot of this activity is driven by the mental health crisis that this nation finds itself in right now uh and is not being treated. And we need a national policy, we need a state policy, uh but certainly what the city can do, at least incrementally, is at least look at those individuals who are are touched by the criminal justice system and see that they are connected to some kind of service to help maybe get them the treatment, perhaps the medication that they need uh to avoid tragedies that we are seeing now more and more.
Thank you. Um, what are, what's the process of um to identify candidates for the alternative um courts and problem solving courts?
Yeah, as I said, so sometimes it's almost automatic if the case is charge specific. So that would be a two twenty oh three uh charge uh with a whole program uh pre pre-arraignment. Uh, then it's other charge specific uh for um Hope two point O in the Orkport. And then the other cases, it's a little bit of a, you know, the evaluation depends um on the circumstances around the case. It's a little harder with mental health, obviously, than it is with the uh drug cases because it is charge specific. If someone is arrested for possessing a low-level sale, uh history of using drugs, we know. With mental health, it's it's a little bit harder for civilians to uh assess. But that's why we need professionals on the front line doing that assessment to tell us, okay, you've got an individual in your system now who has a mental health illness or condition that needs to be part of their outcome, if you will, uh dealing with that. And that's something that we need to work on. We work with our partners uh at CCI, EAC, TASS, uh and a myriad of others to do that.
Thank you. Lastly, before I pass it along to my colleagues who may have questions, I also want to recognize Councilmember Mealy has joined us. Um, what ongoing monitoring do does the DA undertake to ensure defendants um compliance with the terms of the program participation? And how could this process be improved?
Sure. So uh compliance is really important, right? Because uh that still has to, you know, in most cases, someone someone is charged with a crime that we believe they committed. Sometimes they they are taking a plea to it, so they're committing guilt and then they're getting treatment. So accountability is really important. Uh, sometimes courts are involved directly, that's the traditional model upfront, but the whole program, we're doing it. Uh, and then in between, there are partners who do it and report back to the court uh and to us, enter the defense bar as to how the individual is proceeding. I have uh analysts in my office who do a lot of the tracking uh in this and in the ATI unit that we've built as part of my promise to people of Staten Island to bring this approach to Staten Island. Um, but it's something that needs to be looked at as well. And it's not just accountability to hold them accountable for maybe the actions that they committed that society says, okay, you have a debt to society. But let's see if we can work this out in a meaningful way, but also to them themselves. Because if we say, well, we're putting someone in mental health, what health treatment? And they're not uh cooperating, they're not uh following through, then it doesn't help them either. And perhaps they can end up in crisis again and 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 commit a worse act that leads to more serious victims as well as more serious charges.
Thank you very much, and I'll pass it along to my colleagues.
Great. We're going to Councilmember Caban, um if any other council members have questions.
Great, thank you. Good morning. Uh, thank you for your testimony. Um, I I want to hit two areas, but I wanted to start with um the mental, the acute mental health crisis that our city is struggling with, that you talked a lot about. Um, and uh obviously, we see uh unaddressed and and unsupported um mental health needs leading to different outcomes, both violent, unfortunately, and nonviolent, um but recognizing this common core of untreated mental health conditions. Uh, I actually represent the district uh where the horrific event occurred yesterday and we lost a lieutenant. Um, and my condolences to her family and and the entire FDNY um family. But um, you know, to your point, the information we have now is this is an individual with known serious mental health issues, um no criminal legal system uh history, um but known in the neighborhood to to be somebody who struggled. Uh, and so, you know, when we talk about these alternatives uh and the programming, the assessments and the eligibility, you know, a question I have for you and and honestly for the rest of our district attorneys is um the positioning on eligibility for programming uh if the person has some sort of a history for 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 violence. And I know in my experience as a public defender, it was at at the front end, um, you know, a complete nonstarter if there was any of that kind of history. And the question we would often ask is, you know, we talk about return on investments and treating that root cause. It almost feels like it makes more sense to double down on on, you know, mandating and providing services for folks who struggle and it manifests in violent behavior to themselves or others, um because that that treatment can literally be life-saving. So I'd love to hear you talk a little bit about um what recommendations your office makes in terms of participation in these problem solving or therapeutic courts. Um, and then the other piece has to do with the 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 opioid um and drug drug use, drug treatment uh parts. And it, you know, whether your office um requires, or I I'm not familiar with the the courts in your borough, but whether the the entry into the the drug court requires prepleading. Um, you know, that is something that gets required in a lot of different places with 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 some not great results. Uh, and whether there is openness or what are the options in terms of of harm reduction? You know, a lot of these programs, they require abstinence. Um, if if the person struggles, if they relapse, which is part of recovery, um then you can be expelled from a program uh and sentenced and sometimes penalized, you know, more than what was being recommended initially. I'll give you a quick example. I had a client um who was charged with multiple counts of grand larceny. The he would break into to cell phone stores and steal the cell phones um to to support his opioid use. Um, did preplea drug treatment diversion because it was the best option we could get. Had to sign a contract uh where if he failed in treatment, would have to serve consecutive instead of um uh concurrent sentences. He went to this program on that first day, another participant was using in a bathroom. It freaked him out. He left, he was missing for twenty-four hours. Uh, and because of that contract he signed, was sentenced to um a a sentence of seven to four fourteen, right? Um, consecutive. And so it was, it was, you know, really a terrible uh outcome. And so my my question for for you to, I I know that was a long-winded way, but are there um is there support for harm reduction approaches to these drug treatment courts uh and working with participants who may be on on MAT, who may be on Suboxone, who may use marijuana? Um, and 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 kind of follow the the health and science behind some of those harm reduction um services? I know that was a lot, it was a long-winded way to ask two big, also very big questions, so I appreciate your patience with me.
No, uh, and I appreciate your questions, uh, councilwoman. And 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 as I said in my opening remarks, uh, all of us in the city are heartbroken. Um, at the loss of the EMT lieutenant and and my heart was out to her family, her colleagues and and all of your constituents as well uh from that uh lovely neighborhood uh that she uh was killed in. Um, but let me, let me talk, let me kind of go backwards on your questions and talk first about uh the questions about, you know, drug court uh and how we screen cases and how we deal with them here. I don't know if you uh were here from the beginning of my testimony, but I described our whole program and our Hope two uh one point O and two point O. Um, and in those programs, those offers of diversion or ATI are made pre-plate. Uh, and um they are the 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 sort of undertaking that the individual has to do uh to to be successful is prescribed directly for them. I do not have, I don't want to say that I'm agnostic about it, but I am, I set it up exactly so the professionals can say that this individual needs inpatient treatment, this individual needs outpatient treatment, this individual needs vocational training, this individual needs employment training, this individual needs family counseling, uh mental health intervention. And that could well include Suboxone or other MAT. Uh, we don't, we don't engage in that. And I can tell you that uh one of the leaders of our ATI initiative comes from the harm reduction world. She spent a a a prior career doing counseling at the YMCA and dealing with individuals. So there's advocacy within my office for that. Um, and we try to to tailor the 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 path uh individual for that person so that they guarantee success. So we definitely take that approach, uh and that is in the in 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 all of our uh instances. One of the reasons we describe, uh, we we uh devised uh that program is because we saw in traditional drug treatment court, it was post uh uh plate. Uh, sometimes the individuals were almost doomed to failure because the prescriptions were so arduous. And we wanted to, we wanted to build a program that would be successful. And so that's what we've done and we'd be glad, I'd be glad to have my staff meet with your staff and describe that more. And that's why the program has been followed in other jurisdictions, including in Queens. Uh, and it's also why the White House endorsed it as a a national model, so we're very proud of that. Uh, in terms of the mental health, the question is, is someone who commits a violent act can still be have have mental health treatment, you know, as or mental health treatment court as an alternative? It's part of the balance that we have to make when we decide every single case. Because if someone commits a a really heinous act and you have a victim, you have to have justice for the victim and the individual uh who committed the crime. And so we have to find that balance and try to find a way to make sure that that just doesn't happen. And we, and I am sure that in most instances where someone commits a violent act uh and they have an underlying mental health treatment court, there were signals along the way, right? Um, now I know in this particular case that happened yesterday, he did not have a brush with the uh criminal justice system. But we also need to look at our civil uh civil side of this and whether civil confinement, Kendra's Law, and how we as society say to individuals who do have mental health conditions, you need to take your medication. That's how we prevent, or whatever the doctors say, I I don't pretend to be a doctor. But in most instances, we know that medication can at least uh uh abet the uh condition and 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 avoid a violent crisis. And that's where we need to have more resources on the criminal justice side, on the civil justice side, in treatment. Make it more readily readily available. I don't know this individual seriously, but I'm sure there were times in his life that maybe if more treatment were available, we wouldn't be talking about uh the tragedy that had fallen our lieutenant yesterday. So we need to have that approach and we try every day in our our office to have uh an approach that protects the rights of the victim and we 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 care for the victim, but also to find an approach to uh the punitive side of what we do, if necessary, is also much more meaningful. I hope I answered most of the parts of your question.
Thank you very much.
I I just wanted to briefly um kind of respond and and thank you for the thoughtfulness of your response. Um, and just pose a question that certainly I think myself and others have been struggling with is to your point. Um, there is a a complete gap in infrastructure to meet people's mental health needs. And what we're seeing is like, at what point is the intervention occurring? And unfortunately, we're we're seeing a late intervention at at the the point where it reaches down the road to the criminal legal system. Um, and I hear what you're saying about balance, but the thing that I struggle with is whatever point of that intervention ends up being, um, how do we ensure the best outcomes possible? How do we change behavior? Um, and and so, you know, just urge us all to grapple with the hard question of like, does that mean really, really doing the hard work of engaging with folks who commit acts of violence, clearly struggling and not cutting off avenues um for treatment and support because obviously just, obviously just carceral consequences. You know, we're throwing people back, ninety-seven percent of people who go to a jail or prison reenter our communities. Um, and and, you know, no better for the for the wear. And so I I just, we'll we'll close with that and hope it's something that collectively our body, all of all of your offices and the city at large can can grapple with. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Uh, next we'll go to Councilmember Batcher, followed by Councilmember Holden.
Good morning. In Manhattan, we have a mental health court in in my district in Hell's Kitchen at Midtown Community Court. We have a mental health court. That mental health court is only open one day a week. How many days a week is Staten Island's mental health court open?
So they actually, the the court itself only meets once a month uh to uh go through the cases, new and old. You know, so it's whether new cases qualify and to update. But the supportive work that that it that it um um lays out continues ongoing. But in my opinion, so I think for Staten Island, it should be once a week. And I would think for a place like Manhattan, it should really be almost every day because you have the, you know, you have the intake of new cases coming and they have that, those cases have to wait until the court convenes. So certainly at least a few days a week in Manhattan would be my recommendation. And we need more on Staten Island, but we, again, uh, you know, resources are an issue.
The New York State Office of Court Administration responded to a letter that State Senator Brad Hoileman and and my colleagues and I sent, asking for that mental health court to be open more days a week. And in their response, they said that they didn't have the number of cases that would necessitate the court being open more days a week because most defendants are opting to have their uh case considered down at one hundred Center Street because they're getting more favorable um terms. These are people with uh serious mental illness who aren't being uh heard in the mental health court. What what do you think is going on there? What's your opinion of that?
Listen, the, you know, the the part of the criminal justice reform was to um, when, you know, it used to, I'll give you a perfect example. The Community uh Justice Center in Red Hook, Brooklyn, which was under Judge Callegris's leadership there, partnership with CCI. Um, they uh did amazing work because he was uh at within, you know, a few hours of the time of arrest, so at arraignment. When the criminal justice reform um came, came and took, you know, all misdemeanors and put them into a DAT system where people are coming in almost three weeks later after their arrest to see a judge. That takes away some of the um uh effectiveness of that approach. And so new approaches have to be found. So what has to happen is that even if the individual is not appearing before a judge on a DAT, that the outreach, so the screening, if it took place, you're still, you're still in the precinct, you're still at the APO uh being booked. At that time, the screening has to take place and maybe earlier intervention is the way to deal with the fact that the individual's not seeing a judge for almost three weeks. that the individual's not seeing a judge for almost three weeks.
So in other words, the, the mental health court is really when someone's being charged with a crime and they're not just getting a desk appearance ticket. What we've got to do is really front-load those mental health services early on, as early as at the precinct, at the time of arrest, at the 100 Center Street court. We're going to hear today from a lot of advocates. I'd really like to dig into what services specifically are being provided throughout the process, which nonprofit? And, and what I'd like to hear is some specific examples of the services that are in place, working, stories of how they've actually worked. Thank you.
But, Councilman, I'm gonna, I'm gonna adopt your word. It was a great one. Front-load the services now because the court appearance is somewhat backloaded. The assessment and intervention and offer services has to be front-loaded. And it's still a great opportunity. When someone is, you know, in custody in the precinct, it's a great time to have that conversation.
Thank you.
Councilmember Holden?
Yes, thank you, Chair. And thank you, DA, for your excellent work and, you know, helping with, with certainly keep our neighborhoods safe in New York City. I have some questions on Kendra's Law. What are some of the obstacles that we're seeing? Whether it's in the referral area, we're hearing that we're not getting enough referrals, especially from, you know, hospitals, let's say. Do you find that's true?
Yeah, you know, the, the, the problem, I mean, I'm not an expert, right? But under Kendra's Law, someone has to be deemed a threat to themselves or to others. And that's a very difficult burden to meet. So I don't know if the language of that law has to be revisited. You have, you know, the situation in our, in our emergency rooms, our psychiatric emergency rooms, I only know it here on Staten Island. We have limited resources. It exists, it coexists next to a general health emergency room. It's a, it's a, a safety concern. There are not enough beds. I think they have 20 beds for a community of 500,000 people. So there's burden on them to make that determination. And then if that determination may there to get into court and have a court make that determination is very difficult right now. And I think that that whole, the whole idea of civil, you know, the word is civil confinement, but I, I think that's a wrong, it should be civil intervention, right? Has to be revisited. And that's really something that we should urge our state legislation to go back and really look at so that families, loved ones, medical professionals, even police officers may be able to say, I've got someone here who is in, in mental health crisis. They're not dealing with, they're not getting admitted into the CPAT, the psychiatric emergency room beds. And we built out these diversion, these mental health diversion centers in the city of New York. They, as I understand, we don't have one in Staten Island, but I'm going to visit one in the next week or two in Manhattan. I understand that they're being underutilized totally. So how do we fix that system? Because we, we have to intervene before the crime is committed, right? That's, that's our, that's our obligation as, as, as leaders of the city or the communities that we reside in. And we're not meeting that challenge right now.
We have a long way to go on it. Thank you. Just one other question on, out, from Queens. We have a community service program, you know, alternatives to incarceration. And they were doing, before the pandemic, they were doing, let's say, working in parks or working for sanitation. Have, has your borough started that up, community service? Because they, they used the pandemic to stop it, at least in Queens.
Yeah, we are, we are seeing that just picking up again. And we're just getting to that point. But it has been a, a real challenge for us. And, and I'm hopeful that we will get more individuals into what I think is a very meaningful outcome and what's good for the community as well. The cleaning of parks, the removal of graffiti, working with, you know, depending on the case, working with individuals. So I see that as a positive. We had the same problem that our providers were unable to do programs because of COVID, but I'm hoping that we get back soon.
So it's not, so it's not back yet in your borough?
It's starting up. It's not fully back.
But it's not, see, and that's, that's the problem. Because we're hearing it from the agencies that really rely on that, you know, again, that program. And I don't see why, you know, many of our courts are not reopening like they should. I don't see why our programs are not reopening, especially the community service program, which is, again, a win-win. Everybody wins on that one. So I don't understand why we're not starting it up. And it's, and that's what I, I've been, every time I speak to a DA, we get that, yeah, it's coming, but we should get right back to that. And thank, thank you for your testimony, though. Thank you.
And I, we would be supportive of that. We think it's time to get it going. We don't run those programs. We refer people to them. So we have to have people who are doing them.
Thank you. But thank you then. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
You.
Any other council member have a question? So I have one final question. You can't leave yet, DA McMahon.
Okay, thanks, ma'am.
So I guess that the last question is, how can we strengthen the lines of communication to journey map folks who are criminally justice-involved so that community groups have capacity to have the conversation between schools, law enforcement, courts, DAs? How, how could we best strengthen that process to make sure that no one slips through the cracks, you know? And, and speak to it in a budgetary way, like, or capacity-building way, if you can?
For us, I mean, when you speak to, what I saw as a need and was one of the reasons that I ran for District Attorney, because I thought that District Attorney's Office in particular was sort of this monolithic edifice up on the hill that nobody knew how to get to, nobody understood what the office did. And so we came in, we created a community partnership unit that goes to the schools, that goes to the community meetings, community board, that is out at tabling out events and is explaining what it is we do, what it is where we can help, and where we are a resource for people who are in crisis. We do the same with our Family Justice Center, which we brought to, sent on the last borough, believe it or not, the last borough to get one. And again, we are, as a perfect example, where they are out in the community, somewhat truncated because of COVID, but now hopefully coming back to explain that these resources are there for people who are in some sort of crisis that could, could lead to entanglement with the criminal justice system, which is what we want to avoid at all costs. And at the same time, get people the help that they need. And that's what we work on. But I think communication. We do breakfast with our educators to explain what we do and to hear what their problems are. School safety, obviously, is a big issue. And, and the list goes on. But it's, it's about communication. It's giving, having that community partnership approach to the work that you do and to go from there. But any resources that you can allocate in that regard would be helpful. And it kind of always go back to the mental health opioid addiction illness crisis that we have, that more people need to know that resources are available since we started our whole, you know, before I started the whole program, so many people would say to me, hey, what do I do? My son's not been arrested, but he's got an addiction crisis. Well, I hired a peer mentors who I can now say, call this individual, I'll have this individual call you so that they can speak to them and deal with the issue. But across the different agencies, there has to be more communication, more openness, more transparency, so people know where they can go when they have these crises. Most people who are involved in mental health-driven violence have a history of difficulty with their families, that the family could not deal with it, and it went down a bad path. And that's something, it's anecdotal. I'm not an expert, but I see that in many of the cases that we deal with.
I, I agree with that 100%. And I think that that last piece is something that, you know, especially this body and particularly this committee will be talking about in earnest. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
One question I have. I'm sorry about that. Hi, again. You just said something. How many programs do you get that if a child, you just said, if the family member wanted the individual, instead of going to jail, to go into a program or get a peer person to speak to them? How many organizations you can send individuals in that predicament to?
So you're talking about pre-arrest. I was talking about pre-involvement with the criminal justice system. So we have a menu of private agencies on Staten Island, Community Health Action, the YMCA, the Silver Lake Organization, Building Bridges. So I've got a few that I deal with. We also, you know, depending on the issue, we have some city agencies that we deal with that my people will make connections to. If we're talking about post-arrest and it's part of an alternative to incarceration, then most of the programs are connected through the courts or at least present through the courts so that they are recognized. But many are the same organizations. And then there are a few others that we work with, like TASK and EAC.
I was just thinking that someone just asked.
We need more. We need more. If that's, if, if you're wondering, do we have enough? No, Councilwoman Neely, it's nice to see you again, my old colleague.
Yeah, I was just thinking of that. Someone said they wanted to, their son got in trouble and they asked, could they come work in my office? Not work or get time off or some hours? And I said, yeah, come. But then I said, I better find out what was the reason they got in trouble? And I said, wait a minute, I put it on hold. So instead of me just opening up my office to that, I said, I do have programs in my district in which does that. But I was wondering how many programs the city has that we can send these individuals to instead of incarceration? Because now that everything is open, is those programs open now?
Yeah, well, so I, I think for you, the, the Community Justice Center that's near you, in your district or near your district would be the perfect place to talk to because they are, they understand the mandates from the justice system. And they also are connected to those providers that could give you the pathway that that young individual needed with perhaps the supervision that I think I'm hearing you say might be needed in certain cases, right? So that's why, it goes back to our original point, the Community Justice Centers are such a great model. And that's why we need one in Staten Island.
Okay, now.
I'm working on it.
You got that one.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you so much, DA McMahon. A pleasure.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Great, thank you, sir. So next, we'll hear from the Center for Court Innovation. We have three individuals from there. We'll hear from Lenore Lebron, Amanda Berman, and Shane Correa.
Do I have to turn this on? Okay, is that better?
Morning.
Try that again. Good morning, everyone. And good morning to you, Chair Hanks, and to these esteemed members of this committee. My name is Amanda Berman. I'm the Deputy Director of Regional Programs at the Center for Court Innovation. We are grateful for the opportunity to speak today about our diverse range of programs. You've heard a little bit about them in the testimony already. And these programs address public safety issues through the lens of equity, fairness, and humanity. Our work at the Center for Court Innovation spans the entire justice continuum from community-based violence prevention to pre-arraignment diversion and post-conviction alternatives to incarceration. Over the past 25-plus years, we have designed and developed dozens of programs in courts and in communities with documented results. In the brief time that I have here, I'd like to provide an overview of how these programs operate and how they've played a critical role in making our city safer. In partnership with the New York State Unified Court System, the center operates several problem-solving courts in New York City. You've heard about some of those today. A few examples include our Brooklyn Mental Health Court or the Manhattan Felony ATI Court, which are located in Supreme Court in Brooklyn and Manhattan, respectively. We also operate three community courts that you've heard about, including Midtown, Red Hook, and the Harlem Community Justice Center. All of these problem-solving courts are defined by a common set of goals and common set of features at their core. First, these courts seek to go beyond just processing cases to address the underlying issues that contribute to the person's justice system involvement. Some have a specialized focus to address a particular case or population such as mental health, substance use, domestic violence, or human trafficking. Or in the context of our community courts, they focus on serving a defined geographical area rather than a specific problem or type of case. Regardless of the area of focus, a defining feature was, oh, okay. I was going to say that went by really fast. Okay, I'll keep going with your indulgence. Thank you.
Didn't be timed on your testimony, so that's an error.
Okay, thank you. I don't have too much longer, but a little bit more. So regardless of the area of focus, a defining feature of these courts is that they provide meaningful and proportionate alternatives to traditional system responses such as jail or fines with the goal of breaking the cycle of recidivism and reducing the harms that our legal system has historically inflicted upon many communities, particularly, as we know, Black, Indigenous, and people of color. Problem-solving courts have dedicated staff who play an integral role in supporting the participants each step of the way. And I know there were some questions earlier about how we screen participants and decide who is brought into some of these problem-solving courts. And that is an important role that the Center for Court Innovation staff plays. Our clinical staff conduct assessments of each participant. They identify their history and their needs, and they develop treatment plans accordingly, connecting the participant directly with needed resources, including community-based providers and other wraparound services as needed. And then finally, the staff monitor the participant's progress and report back to the court and all of the court parties on the participant's compliance. Dispositions are negotiated upfront between the parties so the participant is aware of what benefit they should receive from successfully completing the, completing the program, whether that be a dismissal or a reduced charge or something else. Another core feature of our problem-solving court model is that we utilize a collaborative framework that requires partnership with judges, prosecutors, defense attorneys, community-based providers, and others. And the center plays an important role in convening and cultivating those collaborations as well. We are careful to ensure that we hold systems accountable just as we do the individual participants who come through our courts. So lastly, we provide ourselves, we pride ourselves in using these courts to model innovation, evaluate our impact, and respond accordingly. To share just a few highlights of what we've found over the years. In Brooklyn Mental Health Court, we found that active participants boast a 74% compliance rate. And I should note that the cases that come to Brooklyn Mental Health Court are primarily felonies, often violent felonies. And the participants who come to us are living with serious mental illness. And so with a 74% compliance rate, and they are 46% less likely to be arrested while they're in Brooklyn Mental Health Court than a comparison group. In addition, participants in Brooklyn Mental Health Court saw a 29% reduction in the likelihood of reconviction versus a comparison group. In another evaluation, and you can find more about all of these data points in the written testimony that you have, the Red Hook Community Justice Center was found to have reduced the use of jail by 35% as compared to the downtown court at the time. It also found that the Justice Center reduced recidivism for adults by 10% and for juveniles by 20%. These outcomes also reflected notable cost savings that were associated with the Justice Center. After factoring in the upfront costs of operating the Justice Center, the savings outweighed program costs by a factor of nearly 2 to 1. Some other data points I wanted to highlight. In our Brooklyn Young Adult Court, 95% of the misdemeanor participants completed their mandate successfully. In our felony ATI part in Manhattan, which handles some of the most serious felonies in the borough, including violent felonies, last year, 3/4 of our participants successfully completed their mandate. And this was with mandates that averaged 18 months or even longer. In short, these specialized courts have produced substantial reductions in the use of incarceration. They've produced high compliance rates, lower recidivism rates, and significant cost savings. We are grateful for the part. We are grateful for the partnership of council throughout these years in supporting so many of these programs, and we look forward to your continued partnership in the years to come. Thank you for the opportunity to testify, and I'm happy to address any questions along with my colleagues who are here today.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you coming out today. You know my commitment and dedication to the great work that you're doing, having been, started Staten Island's first youth build program and dealing with young people who are adjudicated, and when the community wraps their arms around them, the outcomes are always better. So to that point, and I ask this of everyone, you know, what would you say is your biggest challenge? And what do you think needs to be done to strengthen and improve your outcomes as far as on a budgetary or a partnership point of perspective? Just let us, let me know.
Do you want to start? Do you want me to start?
Oh, you can start.
Okay. You know, so we're fortunate to have tremendous support for a lot of our programs, but a lot of our programs also rely on services in the community that we know are often lacking. So I'll say, you know, one, one area that comes up all the time is lack of housing. We do provide as much as we can case management and support around identifying housing options for our participants. But the reality is that it is difficult for a lot of our clients to participate in long-term meaningful engagement and maintain stability without housing. So I'll say, big picture, that is one of, one of the biggest needs. We have a robust network of partnerships that we rely on when it comes to mental health treatment. We oftentimes are the, we are the staff that are doing the assessments. We are doing the case management, the monitoring. And sometimes there are not mental health services that are community-based in the neighborhoods where our participants are living. Sometimes they are forced to wait on wait lists. Sometimes those services are not as readily available as we would like them to be. So I would say, within the community, housing and mental health services are issues that we're constantly seeing come up.
Do you want to speak to?
I'm going to, I'm going to pass it to my colleague to add a little bit more texture to some of the other needs that we're seeing.
Absolutely. Actually, just to expand a little bit, and good afternoon or good morning, council members, to expand on some of the issues in coordinating with other parts of city government, you know, and doing this work for 25 years and developing a more robust understanding of the specialized needs of clients who are hitting the justice system. The approach right now is very much viewed through almost one lens of public safety, where only up until a couple of years ago have we started working more closely with agencies like the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene, as well as approaching different committees for city council to brief on, you know, how to best serve this population as they're coming en route to the court system, as well as before they ever get to that point. So some of the things that we're hoping to see more investment in are those upstream services before an individual is getting arrested or making contact with the police.
And the last thing I just wanted to add is that, you know, we, what we see often is our, our staff are juggling caseloads that are higher than they should be, and.
Explain that a little bit.
Absolutely. You know, we have social workers, case managers, peer advocates, peer navigators, a number of different staff that are doing, you know, direct client services, and this is across our program. So it may be working with folks who have serious mental illness. It may be working with folks who have a variety of issues that are bringing them to the justice system. And in, in many cases, they can't provide the level of individualized attention that we would like them, you know. Obviously, you know, we stand behind the work, and we know that they're doing great work, but we know the challenges that come when we can't hire as many staff as we would like if there are budget constraints. And that unfortunately means that caseloads can be higher than we would ideally set them at. And so when resources are devoted to, to these programs that allow us to hire more staff so that they can provide more individualized attention to each client, and it may also be the difference of a staff member being able to accompany someone to an appointment, for example, an intake appointment at a treatment provider, or attending a fair hearing and advocating on their behalf. Those are important services that can often make a tremendous difference in the life of one of our clients. But if we don't have adequate staffing, taking someone out of the office to do something like that may not always be realistic. So to the extent that we can always try to focus on investment in the staff that are on the front lines doing the work, both in the community and in these court-based programs, I think that's always beneficial.
Thank you. I think that, you know, possibly a joint hearing with mental health is something that we want to do. In recent years, there've, there've been provisions added to raise the age and criminal responsibility, a desire for increased bail reform. Based on the current reforms, is there something we can do to make these community courts stronger and improve their outcomes and making sure that this, the state legislation is, is working on the ground and anything that we can do to help improve those outcomes?
So when it comes to working with young people, we know that meeting them where they're at is critical. Young people don't necessarily want to be served in a centralized courthouse, and so that's where the community court model or community justice centers, we know, are so critical. And, and the, the types of services that they are interested in engaging in look very different. So we've learned, for example, through our Brownsville Community Justice Center, that, you know, interest-based programming is key. You know, they're able to reach a lot of the young people who would have otherwise never been interested in engaging in these kinds of services or would have never been interested in being connected with, you know, a justice center. But they come because their needs are being met. So really focusing on what it is, and you know this, Chair, from, from your own background in youth development work, really focusing on what are the youth's interests, what are the youth's needs? And we know that whether, you know, they're going through the juvenile system or the criminal court system, or hopefully if we're getting there beforehand, you know, through the upstream prevention work we're doing, we have to just, we have to speak to, you know, where they're at, at that time in their life.
Thank you. I'm just have one more question, then I'm going to pass it off to my colleagues. How regularly are programming evaluated for the, you know, effectiveness of reducing recidivism from your participants? And what role does CCI play in quality assurance and program evaluation? She's smiling because she wants to shine.
I'm passing this to my very capable colleague, Lenore, who can speak to all things data and research.
Good morning.
It's all about the data for me.
I'm the Director of Data Analytics and Applied Research at the Center for Court Innovation. And so one of the pillars that the center holds near and dear is to be evaluating and critically assessing the work that they're doing. So we make sure that we are tracking data on all of the clients that we're serving, cases and their outcomes, as well as surveying the community and stakeholders that these programs are working with and in. So we do through our own, either our own budgets, or we go out and look for other grants, such as federal grants, to be able to do some of these evaluations, as well as partner with independent research organizations. So some of the statistics that Amanda had previously shared were research projects that we've done in consult, in connection with the National Center for State Courts, as well as the RAND Corporation or Urban, and so there's other, we take research very seriously. So on our side, whenever we are starting a project, we make sure that we're tracking the data and tracking what we're doing with the clients and what outcomes we'd like to see and think about the theory of change for that project. And then we like to partner with an outside agency to be able to conduct the full-scale evaluation of said project.
Sorry. Talk to me a little bit about the, being in youth development, it's the, the follow-up and, and, you know, the measurables after they've completed whatever program or they're no longer. What do you think of what needs to be done to improve the off-ramp and how we can continually support the criminally justice involved, criminal justice-involved folks? And what we can do to expand on that off-ramp where the community continues to be involved and that there, that the progress doesn't end with, when they walk out the door?
I can take part of that. So I can speak partially to this through anecdote of my own experience. I came to the center as a program participant when I was 14 years old, and two of my siblings were actually arrested for violent felonies before they were subsequently deported. When I came to the center, I was a truant, missing about half of the school days that there were, and I was not very engaged at all. It was because of center programming, similar to what operates as Youth Impact in Brownsville, where I was able to learn a little bit about something that was engaging with adults who were able to meet me where I was at. And, you know, it wasn't in a community justice center, which would have been fantastic, but I was lucky enough to sort of stumble onto an application process. So just in terms of increasing supports and access to programs like these, wherever the youth actually are, whether it be when they come into contact with the justice system and putting them directly in a community justice center with pro-social voluntary programming, or increasing the applications of services through the schools, those off-ramps have a tremendous difference. And now I'm back at the center as one of their employees, so I could speak to it at least anecdotally.
Thank you for that powerful testimony. Thank you so much. So I'm going to pass it along to my colleagues who may have questions.
Chair, Chair, if I may, I just wanted to add one point to my, my colleague's answer on that question, which is that we can't underestimate the importance of trust building. And from the moment that somebody walks through our doors or we meet them on the street outside of our building, we know that whether they're young or whether they're an adult, we know that play, that, that the role of trust is critical in initially engaging them, but also maintaining that engagement. And so what we found is that because we're able to start forming relationships from that moment of, of meeting them for the first time, they know that they can continue to come back, no matter what the issue is and how long after the case has been closed, that we never see our engagement as confined by the boundaries of a timeline of their case. But it is really, we're here for you, however you need us, whenever you need us.
Thank you so much. We look forward to having a community court in Staten Island. I know we've been working, so thank you for all of your insight, hard work, and look forward to it. So I'd like to pass it along to Councilmember Brewer, if she has questions?
Thank you very much. I'm obviously a big supporter of the center. I have Lauren, I know she escaped. But she should be giving you money from the DA's office. So as you know, I think I've had 25 press conferences, at least.
Yeah.
Where are the judges? So you have a wonderful judge on Fridays, but he doesn't have the authority to do as much as like, so I just got a, a letter from the court system saying, sorry, Gail, not enough clients, not, what are you, out of your mind? I'm so, I'm going to do another 25 press conferences, and so is Brad Horleman. To have this amazing resource, and everybody complains about quality of life. So when you get one in Staten Island, if there's no judge, don't do it. You gotta have a judge. So are you, am I, are we the only ones screaming and yelling about this? Are you saying something?
So.
It makes no sense. The entire city would be better if these courts operated with a good judge. I mean, I think, I would say when it started, literally, in the room, the, the whole thing. So what's going on?
So our community courts, as you know, are operated as a partnership with the New York State Unified Court System. And, and so when it comes to staffing, on the programmatic side, we are fully staffed at the Red Hook Justice Center, at the Midtown Community Court, just in, just making sure everybody else in the room is also aware. Councilmember, I know you're, you're very much aware. And so we're onsite five days a week doing the programming. What, what, we are in active discussions, daily discussions with the Court Administration since the pandemic. There was a period of time where our buildings were closed entirely, as you know. And, and since we've reopened, you know, we were under the understanding that there are shortages with court officers and clerks staffing at the Office of Court Administration.
That's not a good enough excuse.
And so, and so, so what we have tried to do is to ensure that, to the extent that we have control over reaching as many people as we can, we're determined to do that. So we are out in the community, both in Red Hook and in Midtown, all the time, every day, doing events, doing outreach, making sure that if we're missing anyone who isn't making it through our doors because we're not fully operational, that we're hopefully reaching them in some other capacity.
But I guess my question is, it would help, I mean, I'm listening to Lauren every minute and talking to her every day, just so you know. So the question is, when you're downtown, you're at the 100th Center, wherever you are, you're not going to go uptown. You're just not going to go to 54th Street.
Right.
So stupid court system, have a judge where you are, and then the young people or anybody gets the services. How much discussions are you really have? Because my letter said, sorry, Gail, Brad Horleman, and everyone else, we don't have enough staff, blah, blah, blah. You know what you don't have enough staff for? People who need help, who need support, and who are out on the street. That is where you will come in and you will solve all their problems as you have for many, many years. I, I really was so angry about this. This is the solution. You are the solution. Go ahead.
One, we appreciate the vigorous support. As someone who works.
I'm livid.
As, as someone who works as the Deputy Director for Government Partnerships, I can attest that on a daily basis, weekends included, we exchange emails on trying to figure out how to work with the situation that we're in. I, I do want to state, in addition to operating our community courts, the problem-solving approach is something that we've seen to also be effective without a judge or a court part present within the Community Justice Center. One of the models that we've seen effective in a community that didn't want a courthouse was actually in Brownsville, in Councilmember Mealy's district. Using the problem sol, the problem-solving approach, while it doesn't necessarily rely on the sanctions that come with the court or the co-location of services where an individual can immediately access them right after arraignment, there are still things that we've seen to be effective without having that judge present.
I know, but if you're downtown with the judge, you get X, you're supposed to go to 54th, you're not going to go.
100%.
Okay? I, I mean, I had 35 foster care kids. I know, they're not going to go. So you need to have a compassionate, intelligent judge at your location. Then the person goes there, they get the services. So I hope you're advocating not saying you don't need a judge.
We are absolutely advocating for having a judge and stating that with or without one, we will continue to do the best that we can to serve the community. But of course, we would hope for that co-location of services as well.
All right. Now, just, just so you know, I think your voice would be louder, if it could be louder, that would be appreciated. And to say that, you know, this whole city is under siege perception, maybe, and, and people need support. So I don't under, this is beyond anybody's understanding, with the best solution right in front of people and not using it. And I know you have a very good judge who's been assigned, so why can't he be there five days a week? Does he want to be there five days a week? Do you know? Or you can't say?
I mean, I, I don't, I would imagine that he does. I, I, I can't really speak to that because I don't know. He is a fantastic judge. But my, our understanding is that the staffing issue is on the court officer and clerk. And, and I know that that's been an ongoing issue since the onset of the pandemic.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Cabana?
Yeah, before I start my, my questions, I just want to kind of add and piggyback on Councilmember Brewer's points. You know, I think, I, I think also it's like a yes and, because as somebody who practiced in that court, who represented clients in Midtown Community Court, you know, I can say that there is certainly, the staff has always been wonderful. You know, the programming, like people are deeply, deeply invested, but there are limitations. So yes, there are folks that come through that really benefit, but I'll be honest, there are folks that were known by the, by the staff there, by us, the attorneys, who had rap sheets that, you know, consisted of 100-plus convictions. And that doesn't make them a horrible monster. It's actually the, the most explicit example of a failure of, you know, city and government infrastructure that there is. And so, you know, the, I just also want us to be thinking about yes and the limitations of these courts and actively being united on this front to advocate for alternative infrastructure, because the person with that many convictions dealing with these things comes into community court, gets their free McDonald's lunch, you know, that day, goes upstairs for their session, is sent on their, their way, and there's no real continuity of care or significant changes in, in circumstances and, and support to, to adequately like, like be able to change the trajectory of that person's, you know, living situation or on a day-to-day basis. So that is just something I wanted to add. But I, I wanted to talk a little bit about the, the court parts. You talked about the, the special courts, the higher compliance, the lower recidivism, and all of these different benefits. And some of these questions admittedly might be more appropriate for Mockjay to answer, and I wasn't able to be here for their testimony, but to the degree that you can offer some answers, just wondering about like the training and appointing more judges for these specialized courts. Again, going to give a, a small example, but in the Bronx, it's currently one judge that, that handles like multiple, you know, special court parts, and she is clearly very overwhelmed and overbooked. And so what is, you know, what is the plan for training and appointing more, more? And so what is, you know, what is the plan for training and appointing more judges for the specialized court parts?
I'm not, do you have any...
I'm looking to my colleagues, because I don't have any direct information regarding plans for additional judges. Is your question, Councilmember, just to make sure I understand, is the question whether there are plans for additional judges to be added to these specialized parts so that there is more capacity?
Yeah, is there, is there a training, you know, program in place? Is there a timeline for the scaling of more judges being trained to sit on the bench in these parts? And then again, like appointing more judges to these parts?
So I can actually answer and shed some light on that. So the Center for Court Innovation has three distinct divisions, one of which being the direct services part, one being the research part, and then the other also being our technical assistance part. So utilizing that research, partnering with other jurisdictions, we do take some of the best learned lessons in things like even trafficking in domestic violence, in drug court issues, in community courts. And we partner with the Judicial Training Institute, based out of Pace, to provide those trainings on an annual basis to the judges in New York State. In terms of specialized training, you know, through continuing legal education credits and things like that, those are more in a voluntary signup basis, but we do offering them through the center on a variety of topics that we touch.
Thank you. And you spoke a bit about participants who have been accused of violent offenses, and again, getting those good programmatic outcomes. And I won't tick them all off, but I think it's worth starting by saying, you know, for the change that we're all wanting to see in terms of safer, healthier communities, we cannot be afraid and cannot shy away from leaning in to addressing violent offenses and violent occurrences. And, you know, I think it's not just clear anecdotally, but clear through research and data, that when you ask survivors what their top priorities are, even when there is a very human, in a lot of cases, the desire for, you know, punishment, for example, consistently will always, always prioritize a couple of different things. And it's one, having the opportunity to heal themselves, two, making sure that they are never hurt in the same way again, and then three, making sure that nobody else was hurt in the way that they were hurt. And so what becomes clear to me is like a very deep desire to change, like that boils down to changing behavior, changing someone who has harmed's behavior, and asking what needs to be present, what healing has to take place, what tools do those people need to change behavior. And so there are programs, like for example, Common Justice, who I know that you're familiar with, do really good work. They're not getting as many participants as they could or would like. They're having trouble, you know, being welcomed by certain district attorneys in certain boroughs to expanding into other boroughs. We're seeing good results, because obviously it's a program that deals directly with violent offenses. You know, there are only two very small gun programs in the Bronx. Those are two examples of like, how, is there a plan to expand those? Why aren't we especially, you know, considering the outcomes that we're talking about? And then my last question related to this is you also mentioned housing as being like super critical. My understanding is that the reentry hotels managed by Exodus are going to be closed out by the end of the year, starting with the Woolcott Hotel this Saturday. And so is there a plan that y'all are involved in, or are you involved in any of the conversations to continue to provide emergency housing to people leaving Rikers?
Okay, my colleague's going to start. Thank you, Councilmember. My colleague's going to start to respond on the first question, and then I'll jump in.
So in terms of plans to start, we have seen a lot of movement since the push to close Rikers in wanting to invest in a lot of these other successful practices to address those harder-to-reach cases. Specifically with our experience in piloting the Brooklyn Mental Health Court, which has been operating for over 20 years, we've seen that we've been able to take some of those practices, which have been so effective, working with individuals with severe mental health issues and violent felonies, while they're successfully being served in community, and operate them out of centralized courthouses. Where we've seen part of the issue is actually getting the funding and, you know, to expand it and touch as many cases as are qualified. Currently, you know, it's been an issue where the state has viewed anyone who had a felony that was going into the prison system as something for their parole services to touch and handle, whereas at the city level, it was mostly just misdemeanors that were targeted and supported by our city government's budget. What we have seen over the past year with the Schedule C funds from City Council, actually, was taking and expanding services in Brooklyn in partnership with the Brooklyn DA to serve a much larger amount of felony cases with alternatives to incarceration services in multiple court parts. Similarly, we are currently partnering in Manhattan with DA funding, but that's set to sunset at a certain point. And due to a lack of funding, we were not currently able to expand into other boroughs, but we're very eager to partner with folks as those available investments become available.
And I want to just interject to kind of lean into the Common Justice example. Like, I understand what you're saying, but like here is a program that is saying that they have more capacity, that they want to take on, you know, more cases. What does the work look like to kind of like, you know, bridge that gap, get more buy-in for, you know, district attorneys to join in defense attorneys' applications for participation in these programs, because the acceptance rates are like very, very low at this point, knowing that, you know, quite often judges will defer to whether or not DA's are joining in the application? How do we get, again, more judges to be admitting folks into these things? Like, there is the question of growth, yes, and then there's the question of like, there are alternatives that deal with, explicitly deal with violence that are not hitting their capacity, because there's not, there's, there are people, not enough people are consenting to it or buying into it, despite the clearly laid-out outcome benefits from the programs.
So I'm glad you asked this question, and with respect to, you know, the desire of people who have been harmed, you know, people who have experienced harm, whether they identify as victims or survivors, that it is absolutely the case that what we have heard directly and also through so many research studies that have been done, is that, you know, they want, as you've just expressed, they want to make sure that they are not harmed again, they want to see behavior change. And in some situations, they want answers, and they want to actually sit down with the person and get those answers. We have a restorative practices department at the Center for Court Innovation. We incorporate restorative justice into many of our programs, programs in schools, programs in courts, and a lot of our community-based programming. So I just want to, first of all, point out that we are doing, we're actively, you know, we are actively operating these programs. In Manhattan, we have a restorative justice program at our Manhattan Justice Opportunity site, where they get referrals for nonviolent felonies currently and misdemeanors. We have a restorative justice program in Red Hook called Peacemaking, and that has been extremely successful and been operating for almost 10 years now. And we've seen great results. So we are very much in favor of trying to expand the use. I think what we have found to be effective is when we have district attorney's offices who are willing to engage in training around, you know, what is restorative justice, or, you know, what are, what is trauma? What are the programs that we are trying to implement and hoping to get more referrals for? How do they operate? What is the science behind trauma? What is the science, if we're focusing on a youth population, behind brain development, adolescent brain development? We have found that some of the district attorney's offices are very open to participating in those trainings. Sometimes we bring in guest trainers, sometimes our staff are the experts, and we're the ones who are conducting training. We've seen, so we have seen that that helps. And we also know that, you know, there is resistance over the years, because this is still considered something new. And so we're changing culture within the offices and trying to change minds and get them to understand the benefits of these kinds of programs.
Thank you. I thank you for your efforts, especially the educational outreach. And I think, like, you know, scaling that is really important. Again, just as an example, was at like a caucus weekend event where there was a panel, and it was very clear that critical people making these decisions, you know, Department of, like the DA's, Department of Probation and Parole, and some other folks that were there, that it was very clear that there was no distinction between restorative justice and alternatives to incarceration, and they are not the same thing. And they don't necessarily produce the same outcomes depending on what they are. And I think that is really key, because at least what I am seeing is that there is, there's real conflation happening there.
Right. No, absolutely. And I think that to the extent that we can continue, you know, to engage with all of the court parties, you know, but particularly prosecutors and judges, since, you know, they may, and they have exhibited more concerns, or just have more questions about the efficacy and whether, you know, we can produce the same results in terms of safe communities and compliance. And we believe that these are, if we are going to continue on the path toward trying, and we hope we are continuing on the path toward trying to close Rikers and reduce the jail population, we have to be willing to explore the release and treatment and engagement of people who are sitting in on the violent felonies. We know that we'll never get to that target population that will allow us to close Rikers if we're not engaging with folks outside of jail. They need to be willing, you know, we need to be able to get those people out of jail.
Right. And more importantly, the whole goal around all of it is to reduce the harm that's occurring, like tying the decarceration piece to actual, actually reducing harm in our communities. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for indulging me here.
Thank you so much, Councilmember.
Just one quick question. So what do you think we need to do better as far as getting culturally competent judges? What are the requirements of getting judges who are willing to do this kind of work? Because I think that that's a piece that, you know, we're just not really talking about. And what does that training look like? And I think it's the beginning of a conversation, but just would like to hear your thoughts on culturally competent judges, judges of color who understand, and if they're not, what could we be doing to get more of those kinds of judges involved to really, because this is, you know, a labor of love, and that there really needs to be a certain mindset on how they can look at, you know, this criminal justice and being a community court judge, problem-solving court judge?
Sure. I mean, so as a first step, right, I think we need more judges from the communities that are most impacted by the justice system. And so I think if there's a judge who has lived experience, who can relate to the folks that are coming before them, and who have lived in communities that are similar to the community where maybe the court is located, or that have been impacted by the justice system that way, I think that that's one really important step. Another important step is for judges to be, to have an opportunity to sit down and hear from people who have been through the system, so that they know if they have not had that personal experience, hearing from people who have. And I think that one thing we've seen that Judge Calabresi, for example, in Red Hook has done so effectively, is that he's just made himself so accessible, both on the bench and off the bench. And so spending time in the community, going to the events, going to meetings, hearing from people about their concerns directly, being able to respond to them, and for people to feel that they can connect with him, because he is, you know, he is a person and he sees them as a whole person as well. It sounds very basic and perhaps obvious, but I don't think that that's necessarily in every judicial training curriculum. And as my colleague Shane said earlier, the center does utilize our expertise by conducting judicial trainings. That's something that we do both locally, statewide, and nationally. And those trainings are, I think, are critical for them to understand, especially trauma. And almost, almost everyone who is coming before a judge has likely experienced some kind of trauma, and we know that because the data and the research tell us that. And how that trauma plays out, whether that trauma is part of what drove the person into the system to begin with, or how it's playing out when the person exhibits certain behaviors while they're standing before the court in that moment, it's critical that everyone in the courtroom understands that, so that we know how to respond effectively.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you so much for your time.
Yes. Next, we'll hear from Marva Brown from the Legal Aid Society. And we will also hear from Raji Uday Thimunglam from the New York County Defenders. Raji, as well.
Marva, may I go ahead? We've got New York County Defenders as well. Great. Thank you so much.
Good morning. My name is Marva Brown. I'm a lawyer with the Legal Aid Society. I've been a public defender for 16 years. I've had many opportunities over the years to represent clients in the problem-solving courts, and I appreciate the council taking the opportunity to review these courts and allowing me to speak today. The Legal Aid Society is the oldest, largest public defender organization in the country. We represent clients in criminal courts located in all five boroughs. Our representation within the problem-solving courts is unique in that we have full-time staff attorneys dedicated to representing clients in those courts every day. These include the misdemeanor and felony drug treatment courts, the youth courts, mental health courts, as well as the Midtown Community Court and the Red Hook Community Justice Center. The Legal Aid Society has been the primary provider for public defender services in the Midtown Community Court for more than 20 years. We know the community, the clients, and the overall structure of MCC best. And we know from our experience that problem-solving courts are a crucial part of ending our over-reliance on jailing and warehousing our community members. The community courts work to address the drivers of involvement in the criminal legal system. They understand that overcoming substance use disorders and understanding mental health diagnoses are not always simple, straightforward process, and that a little grace goes a long way to eventual and lasting success. And because they seek to treat people in our community instead of in-city jails, in a year when 16 people have recently died in New York City DOC custody, we must push to decarcerate by directing resources away from ungovernable jail and to the individuals and communities who need it most. While Midtown Community Court has continued a hybrid, in-person, virtual schedule throughout the pandemic, we know there is a call to return to a five-day-a-week in-person operation. However, just as the OCA and the DA's offices are dealing with attrition and staffing shortages, the Legal Aid Society must be funded fairly and fully to meet staffing needs should the court reopen fully. These courts and the lawyers who work in them have been crucial to ending the revolving door of mass incarceration by finding new ways of addressing and repairing harm to community and community members. Problem-solving courts cannot be the only tool to build a sense of public safety. Their model of using alternatives to incarceration is crucial to ending the moral crisis of mass incarceration. But until we also fully fund emergency reentry housing, transitional housing, and permanent housing, public health care, schools, childcare, and job training programs, we will not address the root causes of inequality or disproportionate policing and incarceration. We must fully invest in the communities in which we have too long intentionally under-invested. Courts alone, no matter how innovative, cannot make communities feel safe. The safest communities are those with the most resources. I currently have a client who I'll refer to as Mr. G. When I first met him, he was in the throes of psychosis and undergoing withdrawal from opioids. He didn't remember the conversation that we had or meeting him. His physical appearance was underweight, skin ashen, black circles and circle, and sunken in eyes. He was unfocused, unresponsive, and unable to assist in his defense. He was held at the jail in mental observation, and he was given proper treatment for his diagnosis. We were then able to discuss his case, the benefits of going to mental health court, and he agreed to treatment. The transition was remarkable. I'm able to now converse with Mr. G., and I'm able to see a difference. He appears taller, stronger, healthier, and he has begun to set goals for his life, the first of which is being a steady presence in his son's life. He wants to be a motivational speaker to young people so that they don't make the same mistakes he did. Problem-solving courts like Mental Health Court give people like Mr. G. the resources they so desperately need to be able to connect again with themselves, their family, and their community, all of which ultimately reduces recidivism, creates opportunity for involvement in the community, and strengthens our mutual sense of safety. In closing, I must mention that this council has a resolution pending 156-2022, calling on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign the Treatment Not Jails Act. The act would extend treatment court opportunities across the state to those who have underlying mental health challenges. This is particularly relevant, because the Mental Health Court where Mr. G.'s case is pending is ad hoc. The District Attorney's Office had the final say as to whether... The District Attorney's Office had the final say as to whether or not Mr. G. would receive treatment. There is currently no diversion court statute for mental health issues, even though mental health issues are prominent in the criminal legal system and are indeed widely prevalent in our society. One in five New Yorkers have a mental health diagnosis, and roughly half of the New York City jail population is recommended to mental health treatment, though few receive it. As it now stands, many clients are rejected from drug treatment courts because substance use is not their primary diagnosis. The consequence is that those with mental health issues are often excluded from any treatment court opportunities and instead are sent to jail or prison, where upon their release, they are without supports, without care, and without a home, all of which can lead to drug use, psychiatric decompensation and hospitalization, and ultimately reoffending. Problem-solving courts work. They must be expanded, and access must be uniform across the city and across the state. I strongly urge this council to vote to pass Resolution 156-2022 and to robustly fund problem-solving courts and the lawyers and staff needed to make them run. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the testimony.
Good afternoon, and thank you to the committee, and thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Raji Idiath Monglam, and I'm a social worker at New York County Defender Services. I am, prior to my role as a forensic social worker, I was a community mental health practitioner full-time, and I still practice in a community clinic part-time. I'm a licensed clinical social worker, and so the topic of mental health and mental illness is very pertinent and near and close to my work. You know, what we're talking about is an unremitting pandemic of a different kind that our city has been facing long before the pandemic of COVID-19. And that pandemic is called disenfranchisement. And we're all talking about a complex web of public issues here, the need for fair access to resources and opportunities for everyone, and especially those communities that are impacted in various ways. We're also talking about that issue being closely linked to concerns for public safety for everyone, as well as issues in the criminal legal system, and not to mention the meltdown that is Rikers. It's been a hellhole for a while now. So in that regard, I'm a social worker, like I said, with one foot in a public defender setting and another in community mental health. And over the years, I've served in the Brooklyn neighborhood of Brownsville, in East Harlem, and elsewhere in the city. And my best teachers are clients, and when we ask them what it is that they need, they can very clearly tell us again and again. One of the things they tell us is they need stable housing, they need education, and they're asking for vocation. They're asking for a fair shot at family life and at civic participation, and for humane treatment and for procedural justice. And more importantly, they're asking for the elusive dream of, the American dream of opportunity, and they're also asking to...
Continue.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah. And they also do not want to be relegated to the margins. They don't want to fail. They don't want to suffer. And like all of us here, they want to contribute to our society. So I want to be a little bit specific about what it is all of us are. I don't want to purport to know anyone here, but at least some of us have had something called the vaccine of opportunities, and that's exactly what clients are asking for. And I also support the ask about treatment, not jail, because some of the things that I will specifically allude to that's been brought up here. So I have worked with a couple of hundred clients, and approximately 10% of clients have had the opportunity to engage in some kind of treatment and programming through the problem-solving courts. Seven to eight percent of that 10% are in problem-solving courts, and others have had other opportunities that are not through the Mental Health Court, the Drug Court, or the ATI Court part. Currently, I would say in terms of number, give or take, I tried to quickly count that last night, about 19 clients of mine are engaged in treatment and programming through problem-solving courts, and not all of them are currently, but a few of them are being actively considered. Now, many of my clients are doing exceedingly well, and including, most importantly, clients with violent felony charges. That's very important that we've been talking about here. I'm going to use, I'm going to just highlight one example, and that's Mr. T. I'm going to call Mr. T. Mr. T. was charged with a felony, violent felony charge, and he was, he was, he had to undergo a competency exam, the 730 exam, and he was in a state psychiatric center for some months. He came back to Rikers. He was, you know, he, because he's very sensitive to medications, at some point, he decompensated because of medication change, at which point we worked the defender office, our staff worked closely with Correctional Health Services. And then we were, over time, he was able to stabilize, at which point he met with the prosecutor's office. The prosecutor's office denied him Mental Health Court, however, and then also objected to his treatment. Now, over his, over the objection of the prosecutor, Mr. T. was allowed a plea to treatment, and he went to his program in the community where he is still an outstanding member of his program. He has, and he's not an exception in the sense that there are other clients, but I highlight him for a specific reason today because of the discussion of violent felony. He has psychotic illness diagnosis. He's on anti-psychotic psychotropic medication. Now, the issue for him was he did go to the program, and he decompensated again, but we all corralled together, Correctional Health Services staff, defense, prosecutor, and the treatment staff at the program who wanted to discharge him. But we stood firmly to give him a second chance because we knew how sensitive his mental illness was, at which point they gave us one more chance. They gave Mr. T. one more chance. It's been over a year since he has been doing splendidly well. Now, I could say all I want about Mr. T., but I'm going to say, when I thanked the program director, the clinical director, for giving Mr. T. this chance, he wrote back to say that the program is truly grateful to have Mr. T. as a participant, that he himself, the director, has had many pleasant and meaningful interactions with him, and that, in fact, right now, they are considering him for a, potentially, they're offering him or considering him for a position in their clinical team. So what I want to say about him is he is escorting others to programs. He's a thought leader, and he's a peer leader in that program. Now, without this opportunity, someone with, like him, we need treatment, not jail, because in this situation, he was allowed the plea about the objection of the prosecution. Now, there's two other things I want to bring up that came in these discussions this morning is the need through Treatment Not Jail Act will make available or expand services during arraignment, pre-arraignment. And the other thing that I would also say is someone here, I think it was DA McMan, who asked for the need for professionals on the front line. And from my own experience, what I can say is, I remember staff from CCI speaking. They talked about having adequate staffing. I would second that, but I will also add that in my personal and professional experience coming from community mental health to public defender office, I do not see the presence of experienced mental health staff. I'm a licensed clinical social worker with several years of mental health experience. Working, having worked in that mental health setting, you can see what crisis looks like. You can see what long-term work looks like. But often, there is a graduate school to private practice pipeline, and there's nothing wrong with that. But we also need a robust pipeline of senior psychologists, senior mental health professionals, seniors, social workers, and mental health counselors and others in public defender offices, in courts, and in other places, because those are the people with the experience to work with people with serious mental illness alongside newer clinicians. So that would be one more thing that I would say. And then I appreciate, the last thing I would say is, is the certain mindset that you had asked about, and that's about cultural competency, the idea of a person being a whole person. And we do not have to look to too many new theses and hypotheses and scientific evidence. What we need for solutions is to look at what parents do every day for their children through the vaccine of opportunities. We use every preventable measure of education. We send our children to the best schools, to best healthcare, and that's exactly what clients are asking. If they are provided with substandard, inadequate treatment and care, they're not going to be able to succeed. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you both so much for these powerful testimonies. I really don't have questions because your testimonies were so thoughtful and in-depth. But what I would say, when we talk about solutions and as this committee moves forward, and again, this is first of many conversations, but let's talk about workforce development. We want to talk about pay parity, and we want to talk about access, right? And I think that as part of, you know, even when you look at the mayor's blueprint on, you know, criminal justice and blueprint on gun violence, I mean, we're really not going back, back, back to the intervention and the prevention pieces, which is what we really want this committee to be focused on. And so, you know, you're talking about social workers and competency. Throughout every industry, we are seeing this, what I would call a COVID coma, which is people are not looking to be in these roles, and we are sorely needed. It's not just social work. It's not just anyone who does this kind of work. It's everywhere, whether it's ferry workers, whether it's laborers, medical. We're seeing this everywhere. So what could we do as far as outreach to get people interested, taking it down even to the education piece? I don't know if you were here when I originally did my statement, and we talked about journey mapping and knowing when to intervene, knowing when to prevent, and having the relay race of folks, whether it's community, whether it's education, law enforcement, that we're all speaking together in order to keep people out of the criminal justice system, and this is what I've heard resounding. And so let's try to, like, speak to me a little bit about how do we make this workforce, how do we make people interested in doing this work? How do we retain them? What is the pay parity? You know, I know that public defenders are, have, you know, the biggest argument in pay parity, you can't pay them enough to stay, but the DA's have that exact same argument. And what's happening as a result, people are languishing in Rikers much longer because we just don't have the capacity to continue to, you know, work these cases in a timely manner. So just talk to me a little bit about the idea of being a social worker, how we can do some outreach, and how we can really build and underbuild, and build capacity so we have future folks like Mr. T. And I have those stories too, and they're extremely powerful, you know, where someone who was in a program is now being and doing the work, and that is the best we can ask for. How do we create more Mr. Ts, I guess is what I'm saying?
Well, I would start to address your comments about pay parity in that, you know, we were talking about Midtown Community Court, and the Legal Aid Society in Manhattan, our criminal defense practice, had 125 attorneys prior to the pandemic starting. They're now down to 85 attorneys. And when we're talking about opening the court five days a week, we need attorneys to staff that part fully. And the previous administration promised us pay parity, and it started in the first phase where attorneys who were year one through four were put on an even level with the District Attorney's Office. And now we're talking about senior attorneys and mid-level attorneys who are not on par with our counterparts in the District Attorney's Office. So, you know, when you're young and in the city, it's fun and all, you know, representing your clients, yes, but having a great time in the city. But when you get older and you're talking about starting a family, buying a home, being able to plan for retirement, you know, senior attorneys are left behind, and that's on the defense bar. The difference between being a public defender and a district attorney is that we don't have a pension. We don't have the same pay scale. So we're talking about pay parity, but also organizational funding fairness, because we have to pay our own health care. We have to pay rent. We have to contribute to our own retirement funds. And so when we're talking about having attorneys who have the experience to represent clients on these violent felony cases, we need people who have seven, 10, 15 years or more of experience. And when they leave the Legal Aid Society, the system, our clients, suffer. So we are asking for organizational funding fairness in that regard. We also have social workers at the Legal Aid Society on staff. It's the same thing for them, right? Social work is very important. We need them on our team. They're integral to our representation of our clients, doing evaluations, referrals, and supporting our clients through the programs and the problem-solving courts. And they have to pay back student loans, just like the lawyers do. And so when we're talking about this council creating loan repayment assistance, social workers should be included in that as well. Attorneys get a little bit of it. There's bills pending in the state legislature to give us more. City council could offer benefits to attorneys, to social workers who are working in the public interest, because you want people to stay working in the public sector and contributing to our society in that way. And oftentimes, it is the finances that's the problem.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I just wanted to add and also support some of what you have shared right now. And one of the things that, you know, pay parity is critical, because, you know, everybody, this is New York City, and I think that says it. And then in terms of supports, other supports that are not as tangible or not as countable in terms of just what has been said, these are challenging, complex cases and situations and lives, and we need experienced people to be able to stay in their roles that we can all learn from, and we can grow with each other. So I think there have to be incentives, again, for people to stay in the public sector. There's attrition, and I think those incentives have to look like certain kinds of supports because people come in with dreams and aspirations to work in the public sector. And the other, another thought is to have consultants. So I have, you know, experienced colleagues from other places contributing part of their time in, say, in the courts. So we need, let's say we need a mental health professional in court to evaluate people. And if you're not able to hire full-time staff, but some kind of a call in the city full of experienced attorneys and social workers and other mental health professionals to invite them back so that they feel a sense of contribution to the community and some kind of, you know, incentivization program to call them back, not entirely, but at least part of the time to serve, some kind of, some parallel of CityCor, AmeriCor, something that is created in the longer term. Also, education in the community has been, has been brought up because we sort of live in silos as if this happens in this community and that doesn't happen there. And that's parallel, again, to the vaccine thing, where certain countries have access to certain vaccines for COVID and others don't. And it's not as if the person without the vaccine doesn't get on the plane and others don't get sick as a result. If you see it as, oh, this problem stays here and doesn't touch my neighborhood, that is not, that's the collective mentality that we need. And I think that education through understanding of trauma, through understanding of this person is a person with a community and a history and aspirations, as opposed to just through the illness and criminal legal model, is something that will go, yes, it's something that can be counted in the same way, but it will go a long way. And I think to your part, I am, you know, I am keen, and I can speak to my colleagues at N Y C D S, we are keen to work with all stakeholders because the us versus them isn't helping anyone. So we all have to come together. These are very, very entrenched and complex problems, and we need to work together, which I'm doing in some ways.
Thank you very much. I will be calling on you. This is the first of many conversations. We're trying to have a community court in Staten Island, and so having these conversations, I would love to continue it and do even more site-specific. So I'm just passing along to my colleagues to see if they have anything to ask or say.
Councilmember Caban, followed by Councilmember Brewer.
Thank you. I just want to use my time to respond to your testimony, and thank you. Thank you both for the work that you do. It is an honor to be able to say that I worked for both of the same organizations that y'all are at now. And I just want to, like, emphasize a couple of the pieces that you talked about. The staffing shortages for public defenders is real. I think we've heard throughout this entire hearing how critical these alternative treatment courts are, but we need to say that they don't work or run or get the outcomes that they, that we want them to have without public defenders. You know, currently, DA resources dwarf what public defenders get access to. Y'all are the first line of defense, but also when we talk about getting to those root causes and meeting individual needs to change behavior, to change long-term trajectories, y'all... y'all, I know very well, are also the people with the most insight into the root causes of those behaviors because you have out of that entire system, the most intimate relationships with the folks that are, are affected here, with the folks that we're trying to see the change in. Uh, and that is like really, really critical. Y'all know what those people's family members and loved ones know, that they are human beings with, with, with value, who have a lot to offer, who deserve an opportunity to heal, that, um, while they may have hurt one individual, have been a lifesaver to another, how they can go on to be peers, to then like, you know, have those outcomes be exponential, I think of Mr. T's story that you shared. But it's not just pay parity, right? It's really expanding across the board, the number of attorneys and the resources that y'all have in your offices. Um, you know, the case loads and things like that lead to, to burnout. Our, our clients deserve every, um, effort in, to, to get the best outcomes possible. And what we're seeing is that necessarily folks in your offices are rationing resources. We are not doing a hundred percent of the things we can for one client um, because we're just trying to make the pieces fit and doing what, what we can for every client. Um, and that, those are like really terrible and difficult places to be in terms of decision-making. And I want to acknowledge that and say, um, that five to twelve-year period is really, really important. I know that when I left New York County Defender Services, uh, after my seventh year of service, um, I was on the younger end of what we call fully certified attorneys. Um, and there weren't a lot of us left. The majority of our attorneys were only qualified to carry misdemeanor case loads, which meant that myself and my colleagues had full entire case loads of just very complex violent felonies. And it is really unsustainable, um, to, to, to deliver the constitutional, um, services that, that these people deserve, but also entirely unsustainable for us as human beings, taking in vicarious trauma and trying to represent folks, um, to not burn out and, and leave. We need these fully certified, experienced folks and critically that year five to twelve, thirteen, fourteen, um, area. And so I can't stress that enough and, and continue to urge my colleagues to join and, and advocating to get y'all the money that, and resources that you deserve. So I just want to thank you for the work that you do.
Thank you, Councilmember. Uh, Councilmember Brewer?
Well, I certainly echo all of that. You know, we had a hearing recently and the whole city has no hiring because nobody wants to work for less money, no hybrid, and challenging circumstances in terms of whether it's public health, affordable housing, whatever. So we certainly will advocate for legal aid, social workers on any, every single level. So I, that number of eighty-five versus one-twenty-five is frightening. Um, so I'm a big supporter of the courts. You heard me earlier. I, I've been doing this for a long time. The, I guess my specific question, in addition to the, uh, the amazing work that you do, would it help to have a judge at Midtown? And how, I mean, I know how the DA money works to a certain extent, not just for salaries, but even just for programs. Because what the DA in Manhattan tells me, and I meet with him often, is two things. He tells me that I think the mental health court in particular is not open enough days. So how do we get it open more days if you think that's appropriate? And, um, you know, if you don't have it open, then you don't bring clients here because it's not open. So I'd like to hear a little bit more about that because obviously the mental health issue is what's on the streets. So a little bit about the judge, mental health, and then what, from your perspective, where do the DA put their money? I know they put them in basketball. I know they put them in some programs. But they have money. The DA's have so much money, particularly in Manhattan. It's a little bit more on the program side and are there programs that they should be putting? I don't know that they're going to do salaries, which is a little bit of a conflict, maybe, I don't know. Um, but the government should pay you more, period. But the issue is judge, DA money, and mental health court.
Yes, um, yes, there should be a judge at the, the Midtown Community Court every day. Um, I think that also opening the parameters of the types of clients that can get into the mental health court is very important. And that's why we both brought up treatment, not jails, right? Because right now, the way the law is, there's no mandate for a mental health court in the state of New York. If it's not substance use, alcoholism, it's no guarantee that a judge can say, you're accepted into this court. It's all based on referrals from the district attorney's office and ultimately whether or not they consent to a client going into mental health court. So we have to change that law so that, uh, more people can get into mental health court. And then you'll have the referrals based on a competent judge sending, sitting on the bench who understands mental illness, um, and what is required, uh, to have someone be successful in mental health court. Um, and I can't speak to the district attorney's office in terms of funding, um, but we know they just got about forty million dollars from the state in terms of, um, electronic discovery, right? The defense bar gets that electronic discovery from the district attorney's office. We are constitutionally mandated providers of legal services. So why are we not getting that forty million dollars to cover the resources and the information that we're receiving from the district attorney's office? And so in that sense, their money is used however they see fit, but we're just not getting that same money and those resources to provide legal representation that the Constitution requires.
Okay, thank you. That's very helpful. Thank you.
I will add that, you know, um, I will also say some of the same things, which is both of us are talking about, um, Treatment Not Jail Act. We'll actually expand that because the Treatment Not Jail will expand the drug court statute passed, um, um, several years ago. And right now, the mental health court is on an ad hoc basis. And the problem with that is, like I said, in the example that I gave for Mr. T, he was excluded. And yet, uh, if someone with psychotic illness doesn't get mental health treatment, I do not know then who, who, who else will. And also there are charges then that are not considered right now. There is no treatment for persons with sex offense charges. There is no treatment for persons with arson-related charges. And yet, there are many people who desperately need help. And in fact, there are many red flags that, again, if there's, if there's partnership with professionals, mental health professionals, those red flags are treatable. For example, um, you know, we need to expand the scope of mental health court as it exists right now because a lot of persons with violent felony charges, it's automatically, it's, it's a grave concern then to bring that case. Or people with paranoia, or people with issues of quote-unquote medication compliance or medication adherence, or even diagnoses. So I think that those need to be expanded. Um, and so that I will say, and yes, having a judge in, um, in the Midtown Court would be helpful if it, if it then parallels increase in access to services and resources for clients who are in need of mental health, but also non-treatment-based services that, that have to go hand-in-hand with mental health treatment, such as vocation, education, and housing. Um, and then as far as the DA's office goes in terms of programming, I'm not familiar, I can't speak to the funding piece. Um, but what I can say is I'm in partnership, working with prosecutors on a working group, um, trying to actually speak from the place that I know about programming and services. So, thank you.
He always tells me the DA that there aren't the programs, uh, that fit the need of the client, or in this case. Uh, so I don't know. I mean, I, I'm down, I go down sometimes to night court and just listen. But I do think either they're not putting the two together or the program isn't there. Of course, I think the alternative course would take care of all that. But right now, we have a disconnect, I think. I don't know, you know better than I, but go ahead.
Thank, no, guys, we have another hearing here at once. We're going to have to kind of move on to the next panel.
All right. Can I just get that answer quickly? Just see if you-
Yes, yes, there are challenges. I will say that there are challenges in terms of, because I, I come from a community-based provider perspective. And, uh, it has, the civil needs haven't spoken to before. So I think that is why the coming, coming together of all stakeholders, even the community-based providers, have to be part of that conversation because there are real challenges as well.
And there are many community-based organizations that are working on implementing court-mandated programs and services. They just need the approval and the funding from the district attorney's office to do that.
And, and many are also open to innovative solutions to, to expand the services. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, everyone. Um, next, we're going to hear from Kimberly Blair, who is on the Zoom call. Um, Kimberly, are you available? She represents the National Alliance of Mental Illness for New York City. Um, Kimberly, uh, I will move on to the next person. You could pop on when you're ready. Um, next, we'll hear from Ayana, oh, there's Kimberly. Go ahead, Kimberly. We got you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm so sorry. Okay, hi, everyone. Good morning, Chair. Good morning, members of the committee. Uh, so I'm Kimberly Blair. I'm the Director of Public Safety at NAMI NYC. However, you're going to receive my organization's testimony via written um, because there's somebody who really wanted to be there with you today. And she got into, she's recovering from an accident and she really wants this written, I mean, stated on the record. So I will be reading some of her testimony and she submitted it as written as well. Hello, my name is Tarnisha Smith and I live in the Bronx. I'm speaking to you today as the cousin of thirty-one-year-old Elijah Muhammad, who lived with bipolar and schizophrenia disorder. My cousin died on Rikers Island under DOC custody in July. I'm submitting testimony today in support of this committee signing on to modifications to mental health and drug courts proposed in state legislation through the Treatment Not Jail Act. The state bill would expand treatment eligibility for court-involved individuals and divert, divert people like my cousin, who would be benefited by treatment, away from incarceration and toward community support. Currently, Resolution one-five-six is sitting in the Committee on Criminal Justice. And once it's passed, it would call upon the New York State legislator, legislature and governor to pass and enact Treatment Not Jail Act. I urge every member of this committee to co-sponsor the resolution and commit to working with your colleagues to get it passed. I'm speaking with the hope that changes are made so people in the future do not end up with the same fate. But my family and I cannot get my cousin Elijah back. I believe that a timely diversion to mental health court treatment could have saved his life. But currently, there's no uniform process to ensure that people who need critical off-ramps from the criminal legal system receive them. When my cousin Elijah was sixteen years old, his mother passed away, which was a tough- You, would you like me to continue or stop?
Uh, in the interest of time, can you please try to kind of summarize this here? Thank you so much.
So, um, I'm just going to go through. Uh, he, his mother passed away. It was a tough transition for him and he ended up incarcerated. While being incarcerated, several incidents occurred to him and it shifted his overall personality. And we don't know what could have helped, but it led to his untimely death and he's no longer here today. It's difficult to look at the failings of the system and see what could have been, but I hope no one else has to struggle the way Eli did. Please consider supporting the Treatment Not Jail Act to expand eligibility and make sure people are not sitting at Rikers for psych evals. Thank you.
Right, thank you so much, Kimberly. And you could submit the written testimony and, and we'll submit it to the record as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Ayana Bates, followed by Hussein Ramin.
Hello, thank you so much for having me. Um, I'll try to be as brief as possible, but, um, hello, my name is Ayana Bates and I'm a constituent of Councilmember James Gennaro in District Twenty-four. I also serve as an advocacy ambassador with the National Alliance on Mental Illness of NYC, a grassroots mental health advocacy organization and one of the largest affiliates of NAMI, serving peers, family members, friends, and caregivers in New York City for forty years. I am submitting testimony today in support of this committee signing on to the changes proposed in state legislation through the Treatment Not Jail Act. This state bill would expand treatment eligibility for court-involved individuals and divert people who would be benefited by treatment away from incarceration and towards community support. Currently, Res. zero-one-five-six-two-zero-two-two is sitting in the Committee on Criminal Justice. Once passed by city council, it would call on the New York State legislator and governor to pass and enact the Treatment Not Jail Act. I'm coming to you as an older sister to my twenty-one-year-old brother, who lives with borderline personality disorder and has struggled with suicidal thoughts. When my brother was a teenager, a close friend was nervous for my brother's safety. And due to his suicidal ideation, they called the police. As a young black man encountering the police for the first time during a mental health crisis, this sparked a fear that rippled across our entire family. What my brother needed at that time was a counselor or a social worker or peer to intervene. Luckily, that interaction did not end up with my brother getting arrested or worse. These kinds of situations where police respond to a mental health crisis often escalate the situation. I still think about how, how had he been arrested that day? Despite not doing anything wrong, what would happen to him? What, would there have been an option to divert him towards mental health treatment if he received a charge? Yes, thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much for your testimony. Next, we'll hear from Jeanette Beck Harrell, followed by Young Mi Lee. Jeanette, you may go ahead once we unmute you.
Hello. Good morning, good afternoon, Chair Hanks and members of the Committee on Public Safety. Thank you for holding this hearing today focused on community problem-solving courts. My name is Jeanette Beck Harrell and I'm from Brooklyn. I'm providing testimony today because my nephew Elijah Muhammad, who struggled with mental illness, died this year while in custody of the New York City Department of Correction of a drug overdose. I am also an advocacy ambassador, ambassador for NAMI NYC, grassroots mental health advocacy organization and one of the largest affiliates of NAMI, serving peers, family members, friends, and caregivers in New York City for forty years. I would like to emphasize my support, support of this committee signing on to the modifications to mental health and drug courts proposed in state legislation through the Treatment Not Jail Act. The bill will expand treatment eligibility for people who would be benefited by treatment, that bringing them away from incarceration and toward community support. Resolution zero-one-five-six-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two is currently laid over in the Committee on Criminal Justice. Every day that, every day that bill sits there without passing, someone with a known mental health condition is caged on Rikers Island, waiting months for psychological evaluation that could help prove their eligibility for mental health or drug court diversion programs and get the life-saving treatment they need. My nephew Elijah was one of those people. Elijah was kind, loving, and smart. His mother died when he was in his teens and afterwards he faced difficulties that ultimately ended up with him in jail. Excuse me. I would never see Eli again in this life. It's very difficult to talk about. But I cannot remain silent any longer as we have lost too many lives lost on Rikers. I believe that proper treatment instead of incarceration would have saved Eli's life. Too many people like Eli cannot get the help that is needed in New York City without treatment. People with mental health conditions on drugs or drug use challenges sometimes have issues that lead them to contact with law enforcement and the carceral system. Mental health and drug courts are in place to help those who couldn't get the help they needed beforehand. But I believe that the mental health court system in place is not being utilized equitably or adequately, creating barriers to entry. A properly functioning and expanded mental health and drug court system and funding for community-based mental health support will ensure that people get to treatment and not just thrown in jail. And I want to prevent another family from receiving the worst notification possible. I am asking for adequate funding, staffing, and comprehensive reform of the mental health and drug treatment courts through the Treatment Not Jail Act. Excuse me. Changes would include expanding New York's judicial diversion law by including people with mental health challenges, intellectual, neurological, physical, and other disabilities who can benefit from treatment, ensuring that treatment court participants are not in jail without due process, eliminating coercive and ineffective mandated treatment by permitting participation in treatment court without requiring a guilty plea, expanding eligibility by eliminating charge-based exclusion, encouraging judges to strongly consider the best clinical options for each participant, and prioritize, prioritize behavioral health needs over punitive responses. New York over relies on jails and prisons as the primary treatment provider for people with mental health needs. By supporting Resolution zero-one-five-six-twenty-twenty-two and the statewide Treatment Not Jail Act, we can provide opportunities to access mental health resources to those who need them most, allowing a greater number of people the benefit of an off-ramp from incarceration. I can't get my nephew back, but I hope this committee truly hears my testimony in support of increasing access and improving systemic barriers to mental health and drug court treatment programs. Thank you for listening to my testimony. Respect.
Thank you, Ms. Harrell. I'm so sorry for your loss and I really appreciate your powerful testimony. And thank you for testifying today.
Thank you so much. Uh, next, we'll hear from Young Mi Lee.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Chair, and the Public Committee for holding this incredibly vital and important hearing. I do want to extend my condolences to the family of Eli Muhammad. I am so sorry for your loss. With the support of the city council, we at BDS are able to provide robust support services to people who may have avoided court involvement in the first place, if they had had access to services sooner, such as assistance navigating benefits applications, affordable housing processes, quality mental health care, substance use treatment, educational support, respite centers, or immigration assistance. So I thank the city council for that. BDS is also proud to have played an important role in the creation of the Brooklyn Mental Health Court, otherwise known as MD1, in 2002. So we have over 20 years of experience with how the Brooklyn Mental Health Court works. And I have to say, it works. MD1 is open to all sorts of felonies, including violent felonies, and it is very clinically based. And I want to talk about, obviously, we have STEP, the Brooklyn Treatment Court, Misdemeanor Brooklyn Treatment Court, the Veterans Court, the Red Hook Community Justice Center. But I also want to talk about what makes treatment work, and how to incentivize more people to utilize themselves of the treatment options. Obviously, funding and resources is an important issue. I can tell you that doing years and years of work, trying to get people into a program in the first place, there is a clear need for supportive housing, especially for those who are mentally ill. But what is it that makes people not necessarily want to avail themselves of a court-mandated treatment? First of all, this, again, has to do with resources. There's a long wait time and not enough beds. And so many people give up after waiting sometimes weeks and weeks at Rikers Island as they're waiting for a treatment program to open up for them. We want to ensure that confidentiality is kept, because that is what allows people to speak freely about their mental health issues and to obtain the proper and appropriate treatment. We also are very concerned that at times, people have heard about the jail sanctions that may be imposed as they go through the treatment process. We all know that clinically relapses occur, and compliance is not 100%. People oftentimes find themselves that when they are not 100% compliant, they end up in jail for jail sanctions, which, again, is incredibly disruptive to their lives, even benefits, and of course, the risk of losing vital housing. So I say this because I've been working with the Treatment Not Jails Coalition. I urge you, as have others before me, to pass the resolution to support, to urge the state legislature and the governor to pass TMJ. I know I'm very limited in time, but we do have longer testimony, and that will be, written testimony, and that will be submitted. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everyone who came out today to, and this is a very important hearing. I'd like to thank my Public Safety Committee staff, Josh Kinsley and Chad Benjamin, for all their hard work in pulling this together. And thank you so much. This meeting is adjourned.